Okay, okay Chairman Bagoff, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after ten thirty PM. I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, all be seated please. The next Planning Board regular meeting will be held July fifth, two thousand twenty-three at seven thirty PM via Zoom. Yamlet roll call please.
Hey, Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Mr. Guarino?
Present.
Mr. Jensen?
Present.
Mr. Morgan? Mrs. Maraldo?
Present.
Council President Williams not here.
Present.
Oh, perfect.
Council President, he was somewhere, I heard.
Yeah, 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 I heard too. Mayor McCartney? Mr. Wilks? Chairman Bagoff?
Here. Thank you. Okay, next thing is we have the minutes of three twenty-two-nine, twenty-two-three, the Planning Board. Do I have a motion to approve?
Oh, move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Guarino approves, Mr. Maraldo seconds. On the motion, Yamlet?
Mr. Guarino, right?
Yes, Mr. Guarino approves, Mr. Maraldo seconds.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
The Morgan is not here. Mrs. Maraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Cordoza?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney still not here.
Could, Mr. Fagan, could you please resend the link to Mayor McCartney?
Yeah, she said she was coming in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Mr. Wilks is not here.
Mayor McCartney is here.
Okay. Chairman Bagoff?
Yes.
Can I just, Gemma, you did not call Mr. Klein, which I know he's absent, but the record should reflect he's not here tonight.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Hey, good stuff. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the board, I'm going to ask now and request an answer by the end of the meeting. Can you, who can come to June twenty-first, June twenty-eighth, and July nineteenth special meeting? That again is of the Planning Board, June twenty-first, June twenty-eighth, July nineteenth special meeting, Wednesday evening of the Planning Board. By the end of the meeting, I'll ask for a response, please. Ms. McGovern, would you swear in our professionals, please?
Yes, okay, we have Mr. Hess and we have Mr. Greigel. If you please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have an application before the Planning Board. PB twenty-three dash oh-four Redwood LLC, two hundred Pleasant Valley Way, block one fifty-one, lot thirty-three, zone IHO dash two. Applicant proposes to construct a four-story, one-hundred-and-forty-two-unit residential rental community with luxury amenities and onsite parking for three hundred and thirty-eight vehicles for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is William Dimon from Dimon Fiero, Teaneck, New Jersey.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Bagoff, you took my initial speech, what this application was for, so we might as well just go right into this and I would present the first testimony of our engineer initially, Mr. Sean Delaney. Mr. Delaney, I believe is here.
I guess.
Mr. Delaney, could you state your name for the record and spell your last name and give your professional address, please?
Absolutely. So my name is Sean Delaney. That's D-E-L-A-N-E-Y. I'm with Petri Engineering at one fifty-five Passaic Avenue in Fairfield, New Jersey.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. McGovern, do you need to have qualified or has he been before the board previously?
No, please qualify him, please.
Mr. Delaney, what's your, what is your profession, sir?
Absolutely. So I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology with my bachelor's in civil engineering.
What year?
I'm sorry?
In what year?
I graduated in two thousand seventeen.
And how, and where are you licensed?
I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey.
You ever testified before this board or any similar board in the state of New Jersey, specifically a planning board relating to multifamily residential developments?
Yes, I have. I've not testified before this board, but I have testified before the West Orange zoning board and several other starting communities, including Montclair, Bloomfield, and Nutley.
And in all of those boards, including the West Orange Board of Adjustment, have you been qualified as an expert in the field of engineering?
Yes, I have.
I would offer Mr. Delaney as an expert in the field of engineering.
Unless anybody, any member of the board has any questions, we accept.
All right, Mr. Delaney, would you please give an overview of what this project is and what your understanding is moving forward in this part?
Absolutely. So to help me give a presentation for this, I'm going to share my screen. And what I'm showing, what I'm going to be showing on my screen this evening are colored presentation boards. And these are just colorized versions of the plans that were previously submitted to the board. So specifically on the screen in front of us right now is, there's, these are blowups of the aerial image on the left. This was included on our title sheet of the site plan, and on the right is the same blowup with tax maps.
If you, Mr. Delaney, just one second. Mr. McGovern, do you want the smart or is this okay?
It's okay, but if you could just read the page and the date of the plans into the record, and it's very small, I can't see it, I don't know.
The bottom right.
I'm old, I'm old and partially blind, so yeah, please tell us what page you're referring to.
So the sheet as of from us right now is labeled Title Sheet, and it's Figure One. This is undated.
It's undated, okay, but we have that, that was part of the package?
The figures, the two images, so the aerial image and the tax maps were included on our site data. For the title sheet, so let's go over a couple of other figures then really quick. So we also have a colorized version of the Boundary and Topographic Survey prepared by Control Layouts. And this is dated July twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen. And then finally, we're going to have our site plan set, which was submitted to the board. And this is dated December twelfth, two thousand and sixteen. And it includes revision nine, dated May fourth of this year, two thousand and twenty-three.
Please take the board through them all.
Through every sheet?
Please.
So the third sheet there was just the layout plan. Fourth sheet in the set is going to be the grading and drainage plan of the same revision nine as the layout. Continuing through will be the sorry, the utility plan is the next sheet. Wait for it to load. Utility plan. This will be followed by the lighting plan, again, just colorized from our site plan set. This is SP nine. The next sheet will be SP nine A, another lighting sheet from our site plan set. SP ten is going to be our tree removal and landscape plan. And then finally, we're going to have TM, just turning movement plans, one through three.
So always just start at the beginning and give an overview of what this project is, and then take us through each individual map and works and explain them, please.
Absolutely, will do. So the subject property we're talking about today is lot thirty-three in block one fifty-one, and is located along Pleasant Valley Way, approximately one thousand two hundred feet north of the intersection of Pleasant Valley Way and Woodland Avenue. And you can see that in the aerial image here, and I'll zoom in a little bit for everybody. So just to give the board an orientation, in this plan here, north is generally up and south is down the page. And this will be the same orientation for all of the rest of the plans moving forward as well. So as you can see from the aerial on screen, the property is tucked behind the existing Brighton Gardens Senior Living Facility. To the north and east of the subject property is the Montclair Country Club. Wrapping around the property on the southern side, it is an existing wooded lot currently owned by the Township of West Orange. And this lot is predominantly covered in wetlands. And one of the reasons we know that is because the principals of our firm prepared the subdivision just to the south for the township back in the nineteen nineties. Rounding out the surrounding properties is the Pleasant Dale Nursery just to the southwest of the subject lot. As you can see from this aerial image, the property is irregularly shaped, and it's kind of flag lot in shape, with the Peckman River essentially splitting it into two separate pieces. The western portion of the lot is going to be the main entrance drive, which we'll see on the next plan, and the eastern portion is the larger part of the lot. And this portion of the Peckman River flows generally south to north. So from here, I'm going to take us to the colorized version of the survey. So again, the property is irregularly, regularly shaped, and it contains five point nine one-three acres of land. Again, the eastern portion of the lot provides access to Pleasant Valley Way with sixty-two point seven feet of total frontage on Pleasant Valley Way. On the eastern portion of the lot, again, is the main part of the lot and where the majority of our improvements this evening I will be focused on. This portion of the lot contained the former JT Sports Complex, which has since been demolished as part of a environmental cleanup, which has been completed. Currently, this part of the property is mostly unimproved, consisting of rubble piles, gravel, asphalt, and the remains of portions of the prior buildings. From a topographic perspective, the property itself generally slopes toward the Peckman River from both sides. I do want to point out that the Peckman River in this area is a regulated water by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, which means that both, it has both a flood hazard area and a repairing zone associated with it. In this case, the repairing zone itself is fifty feet wide on either side of the stream. And the flood hazard area elevation changes with the slope of the stream. Again, it slopes from south to north. The flood hazard elevation on the southern side of the lot is three hundred and sixty-six point seven-nine. And on the northern side of the lot, near the existing bridge, it has an elevation of three hundred and sixty-five point five-three. From there, I'm going to dive into our proposed layout plan. So, and one of the important things to keep in mind here is that this plan is part of an adopted redevelopment plan, which was approved by the Township of West Orange, and the plans before the board this evening are fully conforming with respect to the bulk requirements of this redevelopment zone ordinance. We are requesting one design waiver, which I'll get into a little bit later when we look at the lighting plan. And this design waiver is for a twenty-foot lighting, sorry, twenty-foot mounting height for lighting fixtures, where eighteen is the maximum allowed. So focusing on the plans themselves, we're proposing to construct a one-hundred-and-forty-two-unit apartment building with four stories of apartments over one level of parking. And the building is shown here in this light tan color. As you can see, the building itself is roughly donut-in-shaped with a pretty large open courtyard and a pool in the center. I will leave the rest of the building descriptions for the architect. I'm sure he'll do a much better job describing it. The one thing I will point out is that the western face of the building in the center, this is where the main entrance to the building is, and what I will generally refer to as the front of the building throughout my presentation. So as you can see from this plan here, the building itself sits back quite a ways from Pleasant Valley Way itself, and actually has a front yard setback of six hundred and ninety-two point four feet from Pleasant Valley Way. Now, the building is also set back from the side and rear property lines fairly substantially with a sixty-six-foot setback from the northern property line and a sixty-eight point three feet from the rear property line, both of which abut the Montclair Country Club. Now, the building has a ninety-two point one-foot setback from the southern property line, which again abuts that wooded lot owned by West Orange. So to service the new apartment building, we're going to be proposing a, to reconstruct the existing drive aisle as it comes down from Pleasant Valley Way, and we're going to be calling this our main entrance. So this main entrance is going to follow roughly the same path as the existing one today. However, as we get near the sewer pump house, we're actually going to be pulling the driveway a little bit to the south. And the reason we're doing this is to provide a little bit of a buffer between the drive aisle on the sewer pump house, and we look at the landscaping plan a little bit later on, you'll see that we're providing a significant amount of buffer to that building and screening. As you come down the main drive aisle, we're going to be proposing a brand-new pre-manufactured bridge to replace the existing one that has definitely seen better days. As you come across that bridge and enter the main portion of the site, the drive aisle splits and wraps around the building to provide two-way circulation around the entire building itself. Sorry. Based on the parking requirements of both RSIS and West Orange, we're required to provide two parking spaces for every dwelling unit in the apartment building. In this case, since we have one hundred and forty-two units, we're required to provide two hundred and eighty-four parking spaces. We're proposing one hundred and sixty-eight parking spaces at grade around the perimeter of the building. And an additional one hundred and seventy parking spaces are proposed within the parking level below the building itself. Combined, the total onsite parking provided will be three hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces, so in excess of the requirement. And this does not take into account any EV credits that we can be, that we can count on as well. So looking at the parking layout itself, you'll see that in front of the, in the front of the building, we have proposing six ADA compliant parking spaces. And again, this is right by the front entrance. To the left of the front entrance or just north of that, we're proposing eleven fifteen-minute parking spaces. Now, the reason that we're doing this is to provide parking for delivery drivers, Uber Eats, even Uber pickup, people just picking up their friends and heading out. This way it gives them a place to park, so they're not waiting in the main drive aisle and clogging up traffic. To the right or south of the ADA spaces in the front entrance, we're providing, I'm sorry, providing eight visitor parking spaces, and these will be for any visitors, not staying overnight, or any prospective tenants for the building. Continuing down the page to the south, you will see a handful of spaces, seven in total, that designated with sign number twelve. These spaces have been designated for no overnight parking. The reason that we're doing this is so that the management team can cone these spaces off, and they can be reserved for parking for tenant loading as they move in and out of the building. Zooming back out a little bit, you'll see in the northeast corner of the parking lot, we are proposing sixteen EV charging stations, and these are shown as these green parking spaces over here. Combined with the twenty-six EV parking spaces inside the building itself in that parking level, we're proposing a total of forty-two electric vehicle charging spaces. Combined, this meets the requirement to provide fifteen percent of the required parking as electric vehicle charging. It should be noted that these electric vehicle spaces will not all be installed at one time. Instead, one-third of the spaces will be installed prior to the building's certificate of occupancy being issued. Then the next one-third will be constructed within three years of that date, and the following one-third or the final one-third will be constructed within six years of the certificate of occupancy being issued. Going back to that EV credit that I mentioned earlier, the state law allows up to ten percent of the overall requirement, or in this case, twenty-eight parking spaces, to be counted as two-for-one. So this would bring our overall parking, or our regulatory parking, up to three hundred and sixty-six parking spaces. So again, still in excess of what the requirement is. So in addition to providing vehicular access into and out of the site and around the building, we're also proposing pedestrian access, and we're doing this in three distinct areas. The first area is pedestrian access via a sidewalk that loops around the building itself. And this provides pedestrian access in and out of the building, as well as to the parking lot and the parking level. I do want to point out that the parking level to the building can be accessed on the northern and southern side of the building, roughly in the center of those building facades. The second area of pedestrian access that we're providing is what we're calling our nature walk. And this starts near the northeast corner, sorry, northwest corner of the main lot, and goes down near the river or along the river to the south, wraps around the southern property line, and ultimately it ends at the southeast part of the building at a large outdoor patio. The third area that we're providing pedestrian connectivity to is Pleasant Valley Way itself, and we're doing this by providing a brand-new sidewalk from the building across the bridge and up to Pleasant Valley Way, giving access to the road that currently does not exist today for pedestrians. Another amenity that we're adding on site is bicycle storage, actually just bicycle parking. Again, this is as I zoom in, just in front of the main entrance to the left or the north side of that. In addition to all of these improvements, we're proposing two two signs for the building. The first sign will be located near Pleasant Valley Way, right at the entrance. And the second sign will be as you come across the bridge, right in the center island, where the driveway splits into two. These signs will act as wayfinding for anybody trying to find the site, since it is set back so far from the road. This sign against Pleasant Valley Way will have a total area of seventy-one point one square feet, and the one nearer the site will have an area of fifty-three point two feet. Again, both of these comply with the maximum signage allowed in the redevelopment ordinance. I included a snippet from our detail plan of what the proposed signs would look like. The sign on the left here is the Pleasant Valley Way sign. It's just going to be a standard wood sign mounted on a masonry block wall with a stone veneer pilaster on either side of it. The interior sign is going to be the same construction, it'll just be slightly smaller in nature. So from here, I'll go over to our grading and drainage plan. So our proposed grading and drainage patterns overall mimic the existing patterns that were on-site, but incorporate additional drainage and detention features. So first, we'll generally describe the grading on-site. So again, as I mentioned earlier, the proposed grading generally slopes toward the Peckman River. In this instance, the driveway slopes from the west to the east, and the main portion of the lot slopes from the east to the west. The grades of the parking lot and drive aisle undulate as you go around the building, which helps provide accurate access in the front and in the rear to the first level or the main level of the building, and then it goes down to provide accurate access to the parking levels, again, on the northern and southern side of the building. From there, the site drops off generally to the west and the south toward the Peckman River. As I mentioned earlier, we do have a nature walk that traverses through this area. And in order to create this flat nature walk, we did have to put in a short retaining wall along the front of the building, and I'll zoom in so we can take a look at that. So this retaining wall begins just across from the northernmost portion of the ADA spaces and extends to the south, paralleling the Peckman River, and terminates essentially catty corner from the southwest corner of the building. This retaining wall has a maximum height of three feet and a setback about six and a half feet from the parking lot itself. I'm going to scroll up the page so we can take a look at the second retaining wall that we're proposing, which is located just to the northeast of the bridge, and it's shaded right through here where my mouse is, again, right against the northern property line. And this retaining wall will also be three, have a maximum height of three feet, and will provide a great break to the neighboring property. So as I zoom out, you can take a look at the general storm sewers we're proposing for that. So on the driveway side, we're proposing a brand-new storm sewer system that will capture all of the runoff from the driveway. It will discharge it directly into the Peckman River. On the eastern portion of the lot, so the main side, we're proposing, again, a new storm sewer system, which will collect runoff from the building, parking lots, walkways, and landscape areas. And these will be channeled into one of two subsurface detention basins. So the first subsurface detention basin is located just to the north of the building, and it's this, as I zoom in, this slightly darker gray shaded area underneath the parking lot. So this is detention basin number one, and it consists of five hundred and fifty linear feet of thirty-six-inch HDP pipe and provides a total storage capacity of four thousand one hundred and eighty-five cubic feet. Again, the purpose of this is to collect runoff from the property and release slowly. The second detention basin is shown in front of the building and is significantly larger than detention basin number one. This one consists of six hundred and eighty linear feet of forty-eight-inch HDP pipe. It provides a total of nine thousand one hundred cubic feet of storage. So as I zoom back out, together, these detention basins will work to control the peak flows of stormwater leaving the site. These basins have been designed to reduce the peak flows during the two-year, the ten-year, and the one-hundred-year storm events by fifty percent, twenty-five percent, and twenty percent respectively. Finally, there is a fairly large off-site drainage area that drains through the subject property, and that's along the northern portion, and that comes from the Montclair Country Club, I'm sorry, the eastern portion of the lot. And that comes from the Montclair Country Club. In order to capture that water and ensure that it doesn't affect the proposed improvements, we're providing a swell along the rear property line, which will collect that stormwater runoff and direct it via an outfall along the southern property line. One of the things I want to point out about this grading and stormwater management design is that it has already received approvals from the DEP, which is important to keep in mind. So from here, we can take a look at the utility plan. And we'll try to keep this one brief. So for the proposed building, we're going to need to construct all new utilities. This is going to include new gas lines, new water lines, new sewer lines, sanitary sewer that is, and new electric lines. The gas and water will come directly from Pleasant Valley Way. They will travel down the proposed main entrance drive underneath the Peckman River, and will eventually terminate at the northeast corner of the building, where it will connect to it. The water inside, sorry, the water line will be split into two separate services, one for domestic service to the building and one for fire service to the building itself. And however, this fire service will continue to loop around the building and will service four proposed fire hydrants, one on each side of the building. The electric service itself will be fed from an existing utility pole located near the northeast corner of the site, and this will tie into their proposed generator and transformer, again, located in the northeast corner of the site. Finally, we're proposing to install a new sanitary sewer service as well. This will connect to the building through its laterals and will take the flows to the existing sewer pump house on the other side of the Peckman River. And again, on the north side of the entrance drive. So from here, we'll take a look at the proposed lighting plan. The proposed lighting plan calls for all new LED fixtures throughout the driveways, parking lots, and the pedestrian areas on-site. So starting in the front of the site at the main entrance, we're proposing a series of fixtures mounted at twenty feet, which come all the way down the driveway. You can see the light fixtures are shown here, this orange curve around it, those are the Islux curves, and the smaller orange dots in the center represent the individual fixtures themselves. So these fixtures continue down the new main entrance drive, and then they actually wrap around the perimeter of the parking lot and shine into the site to provide lighting for, again, the driveways, parking areas, and sidewalks. Along the front of the building, you'll notice some smaller fixtures, and these are going to be our bollard fixtures that are against the new main entrance. This will help accent the main entrance and provide additional lighting for the sidewalks here. As I mentioned previously, we're requesting a waiver to allow a mounting height of twenty feet, where eighteen feet is the maximum allowed. The reason we're requesting this waiver is to ensure that proper lighting throws can occur across the parking lot. Considering the surrounding uses, it is my opinion that the granting of this waiver will not cause any detriment to the surrounding properties, especially considering that all the site, all the lights on-site shine in toward the property, and they all have houseside shields, which will help minimize any lighting throw onto the adjacent properties. It should also be noted that the residential uses in the area are well distant from the site and wouldn't be affected by this two-foot increase in the mounting height of the lights. uh, by this two foot increase in the mounting height of the lights. This sheet here is uh, another part of our lighting plan and includes cut sheets of what these lighting fixtures would look like. So starting on the top left of the sheet, we can see the D series lighting fixture by Lithonia. And this is going to be the light that's going to go down the main drive aisle and wrap around the perimeter of parking lot itself. Um, just to the right of that is going to be our bollard light, which will be near again, near the main entrance of the building. Next sheet in the set here is the landscaping plan. So overall, we're proposing a pretty robust landscaping plan for the new property and the new redevelopment. Um, however, to facilitate this landscaping plan, we will have to remove some of the existing trees from the site. So first, we're going to be removing twenty three trees along the main entrance drive. And this is, as I zoom in on this area here, the reason that the removal of these trees is necessary um, is to widen the driveway to twenty four feet to provide proper circulation, to allow the driveway to curve away from the sewer pump house. Um, and also a good chunk of the trees are being removed in order to accommodate the new sidewalk to that goes to Pleasant Valley Way. So as I zoom back out, in addition to these twenty three trees being removed on the main entrance drive, we're proposing to remove nineteen additional trees scattered throughout the main lot itself. Um, it should be noted, however, that we are not proposing to remove any trees along the stream corridor of the Peckman River. We zoom in on the plan near the Peckman River. We can see this little squiggly line that kind of parallels the Peckman River. And that represents the existing um, tree line against the Peckman River. So again, we're preserving all of that. So in total, we're calling for forty two trees to be removed. Twenty one of the trees will require replacement with a minor tree and twenty one of the trees will require replacement with a major tree. The reason we know that is because the West Orange Tree Removal Ordinance specifies that based on the diameter of the tree, um, either a minor or major tree will need to be replanted. So for trees between four and six inches in diameter that are removed, a minor tree will need to be planted in its place. And any tree greater than six inches will require a major tree. So now let's take a look at the proposed landscaping plan itself. So our proposed landscaping plan calls for the planting of a series of new trees along the new entrance drive. Uh, this will include a row of Valley Forge Elms along the southern side of the driveway and on the western portion of it. Um, nearer the pump house, we're proposing a row of uh, red cedars. And if I zoom in on that area, you can see we're providing a row of red cedars through here to provide screening to that pump house. And then opposite that, we're proposing a row of Norway spruces. Going over to the main portion of the lot, the perimeter of the proposed parking lot will be lined with a variety of, um, sorry, with the varying tree species. These will include red maples, pin oaks, and dura heat river birch. These perimeter plantings will then be supplemented with additional plantings in between. And these will consist of arrowwoods um, along with green leaf American hollies. We're proposing additional plantings along the front of the building. These will include again, some of the Valley Forge Elms and Cherokee Princess Dogwoods. And again, will be accented um, by other winter gem boxwoods and North Wind switchgrass. We're also providing a couple of three main areas where we can provide for annual plantings. Uh, the first area will be just in front of the new entrance sign um, in front of Pl- near Pleasant Valley Way. Annual plantings will be provided in front of the entrance sign as you come into the site where the where it splits. And then we're providing them along the front of the building as well. So in total, we're proposing seventy four new trees throughout the property. Um, and this does not include some of the smaller supplemental plantings or even the evergreen trees that we're proposing. As I mentioned previously, the requirement is to replace twenty one minor trees and twenty one major trees, and we're proposing seventy four major trees. Uh, overall, this new landscaping plan will enhance the proposed development um, and increase the number of trees and the variety of the species on site. One other thing is that I think is important to understand about the landscaping plan as it pertains to any DEP approvals is that the plantings along the stream were specifically chosen um, and selected working with the DEP and they were subsequently approved by the DEP along again, along that stream corridor. So the final set of plans I have for the board this evening are our turning templates that I mentioned earlier. So the first turning template TM one that I'll refer to is for the fire truck access to the property. What you can see here is that a fire truck can enter the main drive aisle from Pleasant Valley Way, go down the drive, cross the bridge. It can then circulate around the entire building. So it can tackle an emergency on any side and then exit the property. The next sheet here is for refuse for garbage trucks. So you can see that the garbage truck can enter the site again, from Pleasant Valley Way, go down the main drive aisle and circulate around the building. One of the interesting things about this building is that the all of the refuse is going to be stored internal to the building itself. So obviously, the refuse truck will not be able to go inside the building to get the garbage. Um, and it's my understanding that the that at the time that the garbage truck arrives on site, since it will be onsite management, the management company will wheel out the refuse um, to the waiting refuse truck, unload it, and the refuse truck will then go up around the building and exit the property. The final turning movement that I have this evening is just for a typical delivery truck that we can expect for this site. This will include your standard Amazon delivery, US Postal Service, and the smaller FedEx and it um, and you PS trucks. Again, we expected these local, these smaller local delivery trucks will utilize these fifteen minute parking spaces located in front of the building. And we're showing a turning template that it can access these spaces that can back into it and also leave it and then leave the site. Um, as I alluded to throughout my presentation this evening, I'm going to go, sorry, back to our layout plan. This portion of the Peckman River is considered a regulated water by the New Jersey Department of Env- of Environmental Protection. So our firm prepared the necessary site plans and reports um, to obtain the required permits from the from the DEP. And ultimately, this project did receive approval from the DEP on September twenty first of two thousand and twenty. These permits included a number of things, including the flood hazard area verification, which established the limits of the floodway on site and the flood hazard area that I talked about earlier. We were also issued a flood hazard area individual permit, which provided approvals for the new bridge that we're proposing. The utility crossings under the Peckman River um, and approval of the stormwater management design itself. In addition to the flood hazard area permits, we also received permits for disturbance to wetlands and state open waters, which will allow for the construction of the bridge as well as for the stormwater outfalls. Uh, the final permit that we received from the DEP uh, included approvals, sorry, included approvals for the disturbance of the actively disturbed areas on site that are located within a wetlands transition area. As I mentioned earlier, there are wetlands located just to the south of the site um, and along the stream corridor itself. So that concludes uh, my presentation of the site plans and the prior approvals. I did want to go over if it's okay, really quick, uh, Mr. Hess's letter.
Please.
So rather than go over it point by point, um, we will agree to comply with all of the comments outlined in the report as a part of any site plant. Sorry, as a part of any final site plans developed, should this project ultimately be approved?
And you're talking the May thirty first, two thousand twenty three letter, correct?
Do your number two?
Yes.
That is the correct one, then, yes.
Okay.
So there's just three, three comments that I want to go over really quick this evening with the board. And so the first one's comment number seven. And that referred to the proposed retaining wall along the nature walk um, and whether or not it needs a fence or guard along the top of it. So again, this wall is only going to be three feet in height and will be set back from the parking lot by at least six and a half feet. And there'll be substantial plantings between the wall and the parking lot itself. Um, so we feel that that will provide an adequate buffer and that no railing or fence will be required. Comment number eight referred to the need to provide details for the new proposed bridge. So uh, the bridge that we're proposing is actually a, and that was approved by the DEP, um, is a pre manufactured bridge developed by Contec. So since the, since the bridge is pre manufactured, the final construction details of the bridge um, and engineering design aren't, can't be released until a structure itself is purchased from the manufacturer. So the applicant would prefer to provide any construction details associated with the bridge during construction and permit review. Again, should this project be approved? Um, and after the bridge has been fully engineered by the manufacturer. And the final comment is just number eleven. Um, this is relating to the need to analyze the existing sewer pump house and its capacity. Um, again, should this project be approved, the applicant will be willing to work with the township to ensure that the pump station has adequate capacity to handle flows from the new building. And this would be required anyway as a part of the TWA or Treatment Works application that we would have to make to the state of New Jersey um, to connect our sanitary sewer flows to the township system, system.
Anything else you wish to add, Mr. Delaney, as far as any reports from any of the townships, uh, professionals or society?
That is it.
Chairman, that concludes the testimony of uh, Mr. Delaney. Obviously, we'll take any questions from every member of the board or from any of your professions.
Okay, so we're going to start out with members of the board. Uh, Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Mr. Delaney, thank you very much for your thorough presentation. Um, and I appreciate the summary at the end on the DEP because the screen froze at one point when I heard DEP, so I appreciate you going back over those. Are there, um, I know this is your footprint here, are, is there any wetlands to the south or east of this project?
Um, there are wetlands to the south. Again, those wetlands are on the township owned the lot. And there are a little bit of wetlands and state open water along the Peckman River itself. To my knowledge, there are no wetlands. Um, I'm not sure if there's any wetlands on the country club property or not. Um, it was not raised by the DEP during their review and approvals.
So the wetlands to the south, would that, um, what would be your buffer there? What do you need there?
Um, so I'm, don't remember exactly what the required buffer to those wetlands was. The one thing I would want to point out is that all of the proposed activities in that portion of the site are within actively disturbed areas um, of the transition area, so not in the wetlands.
Okay. And I think you said it was something like ninety four feet away from there, so seems far enough away.
Correct. Yeah, the building is setback ninety nine feet.
And the units themselves, do you have a percentage of affordable housing?
Um, I do not, but I'm sure architect can testify that this evening.
Uh, Madam Mayor, the uh, architect will testify to that.
Yep, thank you. And the architect will actually show what the building will look like.
Absolutely and unequivocally.
Thank you. Um, I just, I want to say how much I appreciate all the EV charging stations and the um, bike path, walking path. I understand your tree uh, removal plan and uh, and the replacement there along the sideways sidewalk and roadway. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, uh, Council President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Delaney, for your presentation. Um, if I could just ask you to revisit your commentary on the uh, lighting fixtures from twenty feet uh, instead of the required eighteen feet. If you could just revisit um, the explanation and the request for that increase, I would appreciate it. I'm sorry, I apologize. I must have missed it.
Oh, no, it's okay. Absolutely. I'll go over it. So the reason, so again, the lighting plan, we're providing series of fixtures that wrap around the perimeter of the parking lot and that sh- and the intent behind this design was to have all of the lighting shine internal to the site um, rather than having any internal fixtures that shine out away from the site. And in order to accomplish that feat, what we had to do particularly around the main building itself is we had to span, now we'd, we'd just throw the light from the fixtures, not only across the parking spaces, but across the drive aisle itself as well. And in order to accomplish that, we needed to have a mounting height of twenty feet rather than eighteen feet. Um, if we were to go down to an eighteen foot mounting height, we would have to put additional fixtures around closer to the building, which would shine out and away from the site. Uh, we really are trying to avoid that in this lighting design.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That completes all the questions I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Alper.
Um, there we go. Uh, thank you. Um, have there been any considerations about a uh, green roof perhaps?
Um, I am not sure. There might be a question better suited for the architect. But the one thing I'll point out is that, you know, this stormwater management plan you know, has been designed and approved without that by the DEP.
Okay. And that's a question for later. Um, okay, thank you.
And Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I'm, I'm hoping this is the right Mr. Mr. Delaney. Thank you for your presentation. If he's the right person to ask this question. When, when it comes to vehicular movement signage and controls, is that part of your area, sir? Can I ask you? Or is that for the architect?
It would be, it would be, you know. Yes, you could ask Mr. Delaney if he could answer it. He will, otherwise we'll reserve that for the architect.
Okay, because I just have questions. I mean, will there be any speed controls put along the roadways and around the parking areas for this development? That's my first question. Second, will there be any signage for speed and will there be anything by the entrances and the egresses for the parking uh, to let people know that cars may be coming in and out of that area? So those are my three questions.
Absolutely. So I'm going to go back to the layout plan and help answer that. So the first question, the first part of the answer is no, we're not providing any s- any speed controls such as speed tables, speed humps or or speed bumps throughout the parking lot themselves. Um, the main entrance drive as it comes down kind of has a natural curb to it, which should help slow down cars. I mean, the grading itself will help with that as well. Um, as far as speed limit signs, we're not proposing any of those at this time. It's certainly something we can consider. And so certainly something that will be implemented by management, uh, should that be an issue on this site. Um, from stop and go control, you know, as far as stop signs, we are providing a stop sign and stop bar for traffic exiting exiting out onto Pleasant Valley Way. And we're providing stop bars throughout the site itself, including at the exits to the garage as they go into the parking lot.
Okay. Right. Have you spoken with the county? Will there be a permit to make a left turn onto Pleasant Valley Way added development or not?
So we have not spoken with the county yet at this time. Um, Essex County won't review any applications to them until it's been approved by the local municipality. So we're, we're going to have to go to them for approvals on this and any left turn would be at their, just, you know, the allowance of a left turn will be at their discretion.
Again, Mr. Green, that's something that's going to have to abide, assuming if we get resolutions granted, we're going to have to go to the county for that anyway, right?
No, I understand that. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Delaney, thank you very much. I appreciate it. That's all for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Meraldo.
Yes, Mr. Delaney, thank you for presenting tonight. Um, a question about the bridge. What's the uh, weight limit on the bridge?
It's a really good question. I don't remember off the top of my head, but it certainly will be um, rated for at least, you know, large moving trucks into and out of the site.
Okay, yeah, that's my concern with the, for the be moving vans, fire trucks. So even, uh, and I don't know if you can answer this, I doubt you can, but even like, um, uh, small removal things of that nature. Um, I don't know if we're going to be providing or it's going to be private contractors, but you know, we got to worry about our vehicles getting in there. And then even tow vehicles, stuff like that. So if we can get a, get us the uh, the weight limit on the bridge, that'd be appreciative.
Absolutely. So I do really quick, just took a look back at our bridge design report. I can confirm that it was designed for H twenty loading, which is highway loading.
Okay, great. Um, regarding the uh, fire suppression line itself coming in from the Pleasant Valley Way, what's the size diameter of the the suppression line?
Go to our utility plan. Bear mit- bear with me while I zoom in on this. Uh, so it's going to be an eight inch fire line that wraps around the building.
Okay. And then regarding, I see that there's fire lanes around the building, but what, what about um, in the front entrance? I know you have spots for uh, pizza deliveries and all that good stuff. But what about emergency response, getting ambulances, things that's done to the building? Do you have any dedicated spots there?
Um, we don't have any dedicated spots, you know, for specific to emergency vehicles. Um, again, they, they can certainly pull up anywhere along the perimeter of the building. There's a fire lane that wraps around, you know, seventy five percent of the building. Um, and they can park in front of the or, sorry, the perpendicular spaces in front of the building.
Okay, and I, I don't think you can answer this, but I'll ask anyways, the Okay, and I I don't think you can answer this, but I'll ask anyways. The entrance way into the the underground um. Garage, is that anything that you have to deal with, like a protection bolster, you know, ballerds, things of that nature? Or is that more for the architect?
I think it's more for the architect.
Okay, all right, I I believe that's all my questions for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
For all the Mr. Jensen. Mr. Jensen.
Yes. Um, couple of quick questions. The um, uh, I know you you had brought up a guest parking in the front. And um residential parking. Um, I didn't hear you mention anything about um ADA handicap accessible parking. Um, how many spots would be and where they would be located?
Absolutely, so that's an excellent question. So we're actually proposing six ADA compliant spaces, and those are shown here in blue on the layout plan. And these are gonna be right in front of the proposed main entrance. One of which will be van accessible, and they will all have proper. Curb ramps that will go up to the sidewalk and allow access, and there will also be ADA spaces within the parking level themselves below the building. All of the architect tech testified to the exact number of that.
Okay, thank you. And also the um. Uh, obviously, the uh water and sewer lines, the underground, the electric coming in from Pleasant Valley Way along that roadway. Will that be underground or on poles?
Um, I'm not sure of the exact answer to that. I know right now it is above ground on poles. We'll have to coordinate with PSENG, who is the utility company. Um, exactly how it will be brought to the site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Delaney, for your thorough presentation. Um, any questions I had have been asked and answered. No questions.
Okay, uh, my first, Mr. Delaney, thank you again for your presentation. Uh, will the signs, either one or both be lighted? And if so, what is the timing of the lighting of the signs?
So we are not calling for any lighting on the signs. I'm not sure if the architect or the applicant would have a better answer to that.
I'm sorry, one second. I'm getting an emergency call from the hospital. Okay, I got it. Um, okay, uh, so we're not sure, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your answer.
It's not going to be, there's not going to be any internal lighting. As far as external lighting, I, the architect will address that. Or we'll abide whatever the board wants to do in regard to that.
Okay, the lighting in the parking lot, is it going to be on timers, lit all night, some of the time, most of the time?
They will be on dusk to dawn timers, uh, most likely, and they will drop down to security lighting at night.
Thank you. Will there be emergency lighting?
That would be the security lighting, yes.
Okay, uh, what about uh any lighting or security around the nature walkway?
There is no lighting provided around the nature walk, no.
Uh, I'll tell you right off the bat, the concern I have is the same thing we had around the reservoir. I'm just throwing that out there. You're off the main road by over six hundred feet, you're behind the building, and. The police can't see you, nobody can see you. I'm always concerned about something that that that's almost a flag lot. That is that far off of the roadway with no emergency lighting or or any other emergency um. Apparatus. I I'm just throwing that out there.
Understood. So the one thing I can offer for you on that is that the sense the nature walk is relatively close to the parking lot. Um, and actually, the proposed light fixtures will fall between the parking lot itself and the nature walk. That there will be a little bit of back spill from the lights that will drop down onto that. Certainly not enough to provide um. You know, for proper visual along that nature walk, but certainly enough for a security level lighting and where you can see if somebody is fallen or hurt.
Okay, are there any security cameras on the on the site?
Well, that might be a question better for the architect or the applicant.
Okay, uh, okay, now you have a third of the uh EV spaces. At the, what what if the uh building is filled, hopefully, way before six years? Will you then agree to fill the rest of the uh, will the applicant agree to fill the rest of the uh EV stations? Uh, based on the percentage of units uh occupied in the building as opposed to six years?
So I I don't want to speak for the applicant on this, but the the logic behind the one-third. Uh, initially one-third, after three years, one-third after, I'm sorry, the final third after six years, that actually comes from the state law itself. Um, has nothing to do with how fast the apartment building is gonna be filled up. It has more to do with. How quickly electric vehicles are being brought onto the road, and that's designed to kind of track along with that.
Okay, but what if they're wrong? So what happens is you you now have, so I I would like to the applicant to think about putting a rider in there. If everything goes the way the federal government agrees, then it's great. However, if you have many, many more electric vehicles, based on the number of electric vehicles, the people who are renting there. The applicant will then um complete the other uh electric vehicle charging station. So maybe the applicant come in for some permutation.
Mr. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, that clearly is going to be a marketing tool uh as time goes by and. Quite evidently, if if more people coming in with uh electric vehicles, it's overflowing, clearly, the applicant in order to. Rent the units is going to have to do that. So I mean.
I understand that. So then we have to come up with a solution that is on paper, so we all agree to the solution.
Well, I, again, I I would think that we will follow the 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 federal law on that, but obviously. It's something that could be addressed in a granting resolution.
Okay, I'm just throwing that out there. Um, is it going to be a gate or any restrictive barrier? Uh, or card access to get into the underground parking lot?
I will defer that to the architect.
Okay. There are, there's going to be two detention basins, two major detention basins. Who's going to take care of those in perpetuity?
The property owner will have to maintain those in perpetuity. Um, and I believe as Mr. Has points out in his review letter, they will have to put a deed around, I'm sorry, an easement around them and a deed notice. Will need to be incorporated in the deed for any, and the maintenance manual itself will be logged in the deed as well.
Perfect, thank you. Um. I think if I'll the um, the the uh trees that are going to be planted, they're gonna be all native indigenous trees. And if one of those trees dies, the applicant will replace them.
Sounds reasonable.
Uh, so now there's a roadway, um. Are you going to maintain the roadway up to Pleasant Valley Way, the access roadway up to Pleasant Valley, up to Pleasant Valley Way?
Yeah, the ma- the main entrance drive is is on the subject property, so yes, it'll be, yes, the maintenance, the property owner.
Okay, uh, that's all the questions I have, Mr. Delaney. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I need that follow-up question. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just.
Not done, not done. I'm gonna open this up to, I'm sorry, who is that, Mr.?
Smaralda.
This is Raldo, go right ahead.
Uh, Mr. Delaney, one quick question, I uh, I just a follow-up. I believe you said it before, but I just wanna make sure it's on the record. You said that the you had the DEP approval for uh site re-vedage and everything was taken care of?
Yes, the environmental cleanup was completed, and I believe that it was signed off by the DEP, yes.
Okay, I just wanted that for the record. Thank you.
Okay, and you'll provide us with that sign-off letter, um, Mr. Delaney or Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, any granting resolution has to be be subject to DEP approvals, absolutely.
Outstanding. Okay, uh, next thing to do is open it up to the public. Do any, do any members of the public have any questions about Mr. Delaney? For the uh information he has uh testified to. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr.?
Mr. Bagoff, I think Mr. Greigle has a question.
Mr. Greigle, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Excuse me, this is actually a point of clarification, so before the public, I think it'd be useful. Uh, Mr. Delaney, you mentioned the properties, uh, development regulations, you mentioned redevelopment plan. Uh, I just want to clarify, this is actually not a redevelopment plan property. There's a zoning amendment that was undertaken by the township to create overlay zone. That provides the standards, just I know it's not a nomenclature. Uh, but it is a different overlay compared to the R two underlying zoning, but it was just so there's no um misunderstanding amongst the public or the board.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
It's just for to further clarify that, there are, there are no variances required. This is all in conformance with um. The the zoning ordinance.
That's correct, yes. Yeah, it's not to say it's not, that's right. Just so there's no confusion. So it's the I H O two. Inclusionary Housing Overlay Zone, and the proposal is compliant with regard to the use, the bulk and everything from that. So that was all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greigle. Mr. Hess, I'm sorry, I bypassed you. Do you have any questions?
Um, I, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions. I did want to offer one clarification, if I may. Uh, during his testimony, Mr. Delaney indicated that the applicant had only requested one waiver. For the light fixture mounting height. There were actually two other waivers. One was was from the requirement to submit uh staging plans. And the other was from the requirement to submit an environmental impact statement. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that the record was clear on that.
And we asked for those waivers simply because we have complied with DDP regulations, which would address the uh environmental impact statement. I don't see it's necessary. Mr. Hess, do you agree with that?
I I have no problem with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and what about the staging, Mr. Hess, Mr. Greigle? He's requesting.
I think the applicants uh would be able to. Uh, explain the reasons to the board why they're asking about waiver, and I, it's my understanding they're looking to build the site. All in one that is not really conducive to uh project being of this type being phased.
Right, okay.
I got it. Thank you. Okay, uh, do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Delaney about his testimony? Please raise your hand to be identified.
Yes, Mr. Bagoff, we have uh several members. Uh, Mr. Delaney, can I get you to stop your screen share so I may put a clock on?
Absolutely, you should have it back now.
Thank you. Um. Mr. Bagoff, we have um. A Joyce Rudin, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Joyce Rudin, Woodland Avenue. Mr. Delaney, good evening.
Good evening.
You testified that you um received permits from the DEP on September twenty-first, twenty twenty?
That is correct, yes.
Are you aware that the stormwater regulations were updated in March second of twenty twenty-one?
I am aware, yes.
And that they now require the use of green infrastructure?
That is correct. The new regulations do require the use of green infrastructure. Um, there are exceptions to those regulations, and those exceptions specifically. Um, state that any project that receives approvals prior to that date. Um, even if it was from the DEP, means that it's exempt from these new regulations requiring green infrastructure.
So you're saying that you're, you are going with the old regulations? Does your plan conform to the new regulation?
Um, I'm not sure if our plans could conform to the new regulations, but we're going with the plans that were approved um by the DEP.
I understand. Is it possible that you could could um get back to the board and let us know whether or not your plan is conforming with the new? And stronger regulations for stormwater rules. We've had a lot of flooding in West Orange, and this is right near um water. And so I I would like to know whether or not you can respond, whether or not your plan actually is is compliant with the latest. Ru- rulings on stormwater.
Ms. Rudin, I we we, i- if you don't mind, uh, our our plans are approved by the DEP. We do not have to. Uh, do what you ask, um, and I don't think it's 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 within the purview of the board to actually. Uh, request that. Obviously, um, as long as the DEP approves it, um, and. We're grandfathered in, that's how we're going to go ahead with that, ma'am.
Well, I'd like the board to consider that request. Um, when, if if you were to get permits. How how long would this project take you?
Oh, you mean to construct the building itself and the site improvements? I'm not, I'm not sure of a timeline for a building of this size. Uh, might be a question better suited for the architect.
Okay. Um, you mentioned that for the garbage, that you would need to have somebody on site. To bring the garbage out to the garbage truck. Can you explain to me if you've ever seen that happen in another building that you have worked on? And how exactly that would work in West Orange?
Absolutely. So I actually can provide testimony to that. So I actually live in an apartment building nearby in Montclair. Um, and it's kind of located right in the center in the downtown, so it's very similar operation here. It's a very tight lot. Um, and there really is no room for an outside refuse. So what they do is the building itself has a roll-up door. That all of our garbage is collected internally here, um, and to roll out dumpsters, they're a little bit smaller. And takes a couple of them, and then every morning, a lot of times I get stuck behind it as I'm leaving for work. The garbage truck pulls into the drive aisle between our buildings. Um, they, the management super, who in my case lives in the building. Rolls the dumpsters out, download it, takes maybe less than five minutes, they roll it back in, and the garbage truck drives away. So yes, I I have seen it in operation and I have seen it function successfully.
Does this, does this building anticipate having a super living on premises?
I will defer that to the applicant or the architect, but I believe so.
Okay. Just a second. Um, there is only one egress entrance to this. Um, apartment building for a hundred and forty-two units. Do you? Think that this could possibly be a problem in the case of an emergency when everybody needs to get out all at once, and there's only one road and you're. Entering onto a very busy road, which may or may not allow you to take left-hand turns?
Um, so the answer is yes. I the, in this case, I do think that one main entrance leaving the site um is sufficient. Now, when you say an emergency, I mean, emergency could be a fire, in which case you would not expect people to be jumping in their cars to leave, so they could leave, you know, and go down the new sidewalk to the road. Um, and get a safe distance away from the building. Um, so yeah, I I do believe that this is a safe access to the site.
Okay, I would request that the board review this, whether this is safe. And you're saying that if there's a fire, people would run out to the road. Are you planning on installing sidewalks?
We are installing sidewalks throughout the property itself and a connecting.
Not on the, not throughout the property, I'm asking throughout um on on the on Pleasant Valley Way itself.
Uh, we're proposing a small connection on Pleasant Valley Way, and there are side, and we're proposing a. A depressed curb where you can cross to the other side of Pleasant Valley Way, where there is a continuous sidewalk that runs up and down the street.
So there will not be, so if there's an emergency, people will run out down this road, only one way out. And then have to cross a very busy street to get to a sidewalk?
Um, to get to a sidewalk on the main thoroughfare, absolutely, but to get a safe distance from the building, no, they wouldn't have to go that far. That main access drive that runs down from Pleasant Valley Way is, I believe, over five hundred feet long. And provide plenty of area for people to congregate, should there be an emergency in the building, like a fire.
Okay, have you worked on buildings of this size?
I have, yes.
And I'm just surprised that you don't ha- have an idea of how long the construction um timeline would be for such a such a building.
Mr. The architect is gonna talk to that uh answer.
But there would also be time to install all of the electricals, the all of the plumbing, all of that takes time too. So I assume that the engineer would be an expert in terms of the timeline for that, how long that would take.
So I I can talk to the site improvements themselves. I can't talk to the construction of the building. Um, site improvements on a site like this, it really just depends on the staging of the building and how it's built. I mean, you can build it. The site work within, you know, nine to eighteen months, depending on on how motivated the contractor is.
Okay, thank you very much. No more questions.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Delaney? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Uh, Mr. Malanga, please state your name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road. Um, good evening, Chairman Bagoff, members of the board. Uh, Mr. Delaney, good evening.
Good evening.
Are you aware that the township has an ordinance pertaining to the number of trees in a parking lot? Relative to the number of spaces in that parking lot?
I am aware of that, yes.
And how many trees in the parking lot does this project require?
Um, it requires one tree for every ten parking spaces. And we're taking this to mean every ten on, um, sorry, surface parking spaces. So it would result in a requirement of sixteen point eight trees, and we're proposing thirty-five trees around the perimeter of the parking lot.
Around the perimeter, but none within the parking lot itself. Is that right?
Correct, there are no trees inside the parking lot.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Delaney? Do any of the members of the public have any questions, Mr. Delaney? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Uh, Jack Dean, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, hi, good evening, and I hope you can hear me. Uh, Jack Dean, Bromley Drive. Uh, thank you for a very creative presentation on um. On a problematic lot, I'm sure. Uh, my questions are really about uh active circulation. Uh, so first would be. Uh, we understand that you are building or proposing a sidewalk up to Pleasant Valley Way. But it doesn't connect to any other sidewalk. Now, there is no sidewalk in front of Brighton Gardens. but it doesn't connect to any other sidewalk. Now, there is no sidewalk in front of Brighton Gardens uh that I'm aware of. So you proposed, I guess, that people would cross Pleasant Valley Way to reach the existing sidewalk. Um. And um, you know, I guess more of a statement than a question is I hope something could be done for to create a new sidewalk perhaps in front of Brighton Gardens. Uh, there are children that would be walking towards the high school or Redwood School, and I think uh the current proposal is problematic. Uh, perhaps there's an alternative connection out of the nature trail uh over towards McCloskey Court, uh perhaps for children to walk towards Redwood School. Related to that, I would ask, uh, how would a school bus uh access uh the the property or pick up or drop off children at the beginning or end of the day? Uh, there is a drop-off southbound on Pleasant Valley Way, but I'm I'm not sure if it's a good idea to have children cross there. Um, and then finally, with regard to bike storage, uh, it's commendable that there are bike lockers or a bike rack in front of the building. Uh, I would ask if bike lockers or bike room would be provided in the garage so that the tenants, you know, could really make use of a a secure and convenient place um and have an alternative to driving. Um, and then lastly, uh, sorry to keep going. Will there be large central H V A C units, chillers, et cetera um on or around the property? And what is your expectation of the noise generation by those units that would uh carry towards the adjacent neighborhoods? So, thank you.
So I'll try to address those in order. So first for the sidewalk connection, um, that's correct. We're connecting the proposed apartment building up the driveway to Pleasant Valley Way. Um, there are no sidewalks on our side of the street. Unfortunately, our lot width is only sixty feet, so we can only control the sidewalks within that sixty-foot swath. Sorry, I forgot the order of the questions. As far as the school bus drop-off goes, obviously, we don't know the operations of how the school system or the school uh school bus companies would handle that. Um, should they have to drive on-site or should that be a good viable option? Um, they can certainly fit on-site and circulate around it. If a fire truck can make it around the building, I'm going to school bus should be able to do it with no problem as well. I believe that there are bike bicycle storage inside the building in the parking level, but again, the architect would be a a better person for that um as he would be also for the air conditioning units and how those will be handled and the noise.
But there are air conditioning units. Are they individual units or is it going to be one chiller? One large H V A C unit, do you know?
I do not know.
Okay.
And do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Delaney about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
The person who entered the meeting is Lee. Please state your name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting.
Yeah, this is Lee from Mayfair Drive, actually across the street from the site.
Need need the whole name, your whole name, sir?
Uh, Guo Wei Li. G U O W E I N L I.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Uh, two questions. Why is like, uh, you know, a few people mentioned this about a sidewalk? If the new resident from that complex, right, if they want to go to for longer park, they have to across the street, right, because there's no far, no sidewalk on that side.
If they were to walk there, yes.
Yes, so they have to go across the street. It's a busy street. So and my second question, I have two questions. Second question actually related, how much impact this will bring traffic-wise to the Pleasant Valley Way?
So I'm not sure. There was not a a traffic report prepared for this. The one thing I do want to point out is that this is a fully conforming application. Um, so that's why no traffic report was done.
Yes, this is my major concern because I live across the street, you know. Uh, a lot of times like if I want to make a left turn from Mayfair Drive to Pleasant Valley, I have to wait. You know, uh, this is very normal, right? And the if we have like a hundred po- a hundred forty-two new resident across street, if they want to make a left turn from their site, there would be a lot of, uh, I don't know, you know. It's just a concern.
We we understand that that'll be reviewed as part of our application to the county.
Sure, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Delaney about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Mr. Chairman, I am seeing none at this time.
Outstanding. Okay. Up next.
Uh, yes, I at this time, I'm not okay, recall, um, Mr. Art Michaels, who is the uh architect.
You that good, good evening.
Oh, I'm trying to find you. Okay, Mr. Michaels, please state your name, spell your last name and give your professional address.
Uh, Arthur Michaels, M I C H E L S, uh, six forty-five Westwood Avenue in Rivervale, New Jersey.
Hey, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Michaels, have you ever testified before this board?
I think once, probably fifteen years ago on a sign there.
Count, we'll qualify you at this point, sir. Uh, what is your profession?
I'm a a registered architect.
How long have you been so?
Uh, since nineteen eighty-seven. My license is current in the state of New Jersey. I have a um a bachelor of science and a bachelor of architecture from Kent State School of Architecture and Envir- Environmental Design. I've testified before um hundreds, if not over thousands of boards in the state of New Jersey um and on projects very similar to this. Uh, and have always been uh uh accepted as an expert witness in the field of architecture.
I would offer, I would offer Mr. Uh, Mr. Michaels as an expert in the field of architecture.
Unless any members of the board have any questions, we accept Mr. Michael as an expert in licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Mr. Michaels, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Um, I guess I'd I'd like to share um our drawings and uh and uh go through them. Let me just make sure I have uh the right screen here and I'll move this over. We just uh, is the the board seeing the drawings?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so uh what I have on the screen is the full set uh that was submitted to the board uh for approval uh with the date three nine twenty-three. Uh, and it's sheets A one hundred through sheets A one oh five. Um, I'm going to start on the uh, uh, I'm going to start in the bottom and work my way up. Um, let me give a quick description. Uh, what we have is a hundred and forty-two unit building. Um, dwelling units in it. It's uh four stories on top of um one level of parking. Uh, the parking is uh partially below the finish grade, uh, the average finish grade around the perimeter of the building. Uh, out of the hundred and forty-two units, there are uh twelve one bedrooms, a hundred and ten two bedrooms and twenty-three bedrooms. Uh, of those hundred and forty-two units, twenty-eight of those units will be affordable units. Um, the mix of the affordable units is for one bedrooms. Uh, it is sixteen two bedrooms uh and is eight three bedrooms. Uh, it also has a um a large amenity space on the uh ground floor and uh partially in the second floor. Uh, and then there's a garage, uh garage parking in the lowest level, uh which has a hundred and seventy parking spaces. And this is what you you're seeing in front of you. Um, uh, to the top is the um, the the north of the project. Uh, and this is the entrance drive that Mr. Delaney showed uh on his site plan. I'll back it out a little bit so you can see where it is. Uh, corresponding on the south side, there is another entrance di- drive to the parking garage. Um, at at this point, uh, we have not indicated gates. Um, but the owner would like to have the option of put those gates in. Uh, they will be operated by uh wireless fobs uh to open the gate, you know, uh, if if he so chooses to put that in. Uh, within the garage, um, besides the hundred and seventies, um, uh, parking spaces, uh, there are twenty-eight uh E V spaces or tw- excuse me, twenty-six E V spaces. Uh, that are uh immediately along the left of the entry drive as you come in from the southerly entrance. Um, there are two cores in the building, elevator cores. Uh, one here in the this lower left can corner that I'm showing, one in the upper left. Uh, that relates to the entrance up above at the ground level. Uh, and there's a stair there. Um, close to each of those elevator cores, uh, there's handicap parking spaces. Uh, there's two in the south core, three on the north core to supplement the outside spaces. Uh, also on the north core, there is a van accessible space. Uh, uh, and the ceiling height in the garage uh would enable for the van access into the garage. Um, likewise, off of those two cores, uh, there is the trash room uh that um on each side, so there are two trash rooms uh on the north and south side by the elevator cores. Uh, those relate to some trash shoots and smaller trash rooms that are on the upper floors that I'll show you shortly. Um, those shoots, there's one chute in each room for uh trash and there's one chute for recycling. Uh, and they'll go in and get collected in there into into um bins that will get rolled out as the engineer testified. Do, um, behind that, there's some storage areas. Um, on the north side, there's uh next to the trash room and next to the parking, uh, there's a fairly uh good-sized storage area uh that the owner intends to designate that storage area uh for um bicycle storage uh for the residents, uh so that the outside bike racks uh can be utilized by visitors. Uh, and then the inside bike racks uh can be uh inside the in- inside the garage area and secured. Um, additional from that, there's various um mechanical rooms around the perimeter of the garage uh that tie into the to to the utilities. Uh, and then there's a small pet spa off of the one elevator lobby uh to help uh help residents uh deal with their pets. Um, and that that's sort of an update on sheet A one hundred, which was the garage le- garage level plan. I'm jumping down up to sheet A one oh one, uh, which is the ground level plan. Uh, that shows uh the building with a a donut shape going around. Uh, and in the middle, uh, in the middle of the donut, uh, there is a courtyard. Uh, the courtyard would have a pool, um, some amenity areas uh that would be predominantly paving with some landscaping on it. Um, and and uh, and there would also be uh balconies or patios off of these units uh that that circulate the interior courtyard, uh and they look into a nice area there. Uh, for entrance into the building, uh, the the main entrance is here on the west side. Uh, you come into a lobby. Uh, that lobby is a little bit low. There's a package room and leasing offices and management office down at that level. Uh, there's a large package room and a mailroom. Uh, the owner did have a contact with the the postmaster. Uh, she has expressed that she is fine with the mailroom being within the building uh and just wants to work with us as we develop the construction details, the interiors on on the selection of the mailboxes, uh how they're loaded and how they're locked. Um, as you go in there, that's a a larger ceiling height space in this lobby as you go in, you go some steps up, we're an elevator up. Uh, and then there's um amenity areas that are available for uh the residents. Uh, there's a lot rather large lounge area. Uh, that lounge opens up with very wide doors into an area that would have a pantry, uh that could work in conjunction with the lounge. And outside of that, there would be a little grill station that would be available for the residents. Uh, on the other side of it, uh, there would be some restrooms uh that would service both the public spaces on this level, uh as well as the pool area uh with a little uh cabana space behind it and possibly a yoga spa or something like that. Uh, as you go around the building, uh, you can see the elevator lobbies that I discussed. There'd be two elevators on each side stairway. Uh, then a trash room and then these represent the trash shoots. Uh, then the units go, there's a corridor that loops completely around. You know, units opening off of that, uh, so there are units to the inside as well as to the outside. Uh, and then there's a secondary core um on the north side. Uh, you know, once again with two elevators, a stair, uh, and then and then the trash room. Uh, the the upper, the second floor is uh is is very similar. You know, um, type units going around. It's just a little difference in what the amenities are in there. There's a gym in this floor. Uh, there's like a library, a conference room. Uh, and then there's some co-working space available for uh the residents as well as the screening room. Uh, additional to that, there are areas that are open to below uh that goes and gives a volume to the main entrance area and to the public space uh to en- enhance the uh the visual impact in the in the lobby area of the building. Uh, best of this plan goes and shows uh the units going around and the mix of the units going around. Uh, the top two floors, and I'm jumping to sheet A uh, A one oh three, which is the third and fourth floor. Um, shows that the the building now, instead of being a don- donut, is a just the U shape. Uh, and the the amenities building uh drops off in so only two stories there. Uh, thereby bringing more light and air uh down into courtyard and opening the courtyard up and uh and and from the western exposure and making it a little bit more inviting. Uh, once again, uh, this plan goes and shows the units around. Uh, the next sheet that we've provided is a of plans of typical units. Uh, it's showing what a typical uh affordable units are for the one, two and three. Uh, what typical units are for the market rate units for the one, two and three. Uh, you can see all the units are uh uh meet all the size requirements. Uh, all the units are a hundred percent adaptable for handicap compliance. Uh, all the units have uh stackable washers and dryers in them uh and very nice eating or kitchen areas uh with some kind of bar or whatever. Um, one thing about uh the um two and many of the units, we have a number of the units that we've called out for a den. Uh, what this den is, is an area in the back of the unit by the entrance uh that is intended to be um a home office. Excuse me, we've um, the the owner has found and feels that um the world has changed in the last several years. Uh, people like in in like to work at home. Uh, many people work at home all the time or at least a couple of days a week uh and need some kind of space to provide that. So these units are a little bit larger. Uh, we provide, we've provided spaces in the back that in in this particular unit is seven and a half feet wide by eleven feet long. Uh, it doesn't have any windows in it, doesn't have any closets in it. It's not intended to be a bedroom, you know, uh, and uh and uh, and it's really strictly for a little den space or primarily a home office space. Uh, there was some discussions at your site wind review advisory board meeting about not having a door on that. Um, we feel that it really is appropriate to have a door. Um, more and more people have uh these type of meetings, zoo meetings and so on. Uh, and in some of those conversations, uh, there's privacy of other family members that are in the house at the same time that needed to adequately uh conduct those type of business um things from the, you know, from the officer den. Um, you know, I think that when the uh, when the owner develops his leases, he'll identify that there that there are two-bedroom units or one-bedroom units and so on. Uh, so these plans here, I go through them, the more, uh, most of the units um, I'm going to talk about this one for a moment. It's intended um to have a balcony on them. Um, but it, the mechanical system uh is a system that sits off the edge of the balcony uh that vents directly outside. So there's no single system that really operates the entire building. Uh, the H V A C would be uh individual units for each individual unit. Uh, if uh, you know, and either the condenses for those would be as part of the unit itself or in in a few of the units that that's not possible, uh, they would be in little flat areas of the roof uh that would be on the courtyard side and not at all visible from uh um from anywhere around the perimeter. Uh, likewise, uh, there will probably be Likewise, there will probably be in the. In the amenities area, there'd be a little package unit. But there's a little flat roof area that can be back in the courtyard side. That would be not visible at all from anywhere around the perimeter. None of these are noisy and I don't feel that any of this would cause any kind of noise or negative visual impact. To to anyone. I'm going to jump onto the elevations. The elevations. I'm going to go to the front, as you can see in the the front elevation here. We have a mixture of materials. But before I get to that, the area that I'm just going to sort of highlight here for a minute. Right here, that that is the. The amenities portion of the building and as I testified regarding to the plans. You can see that that amenities portion of the building is only two stories tall. So when I'm looking at it from plan, you know, we're seeing. This elevation here and we're seeing that two story element here. This face here back all the way at the back of the courtyard. Is in fact, this shadowed out space back here. You'll see that we took a great care into the building. To to develop a nice solid base to it of a stone. We've accented that stone with a different color stone or darker stone at certain spots for for accents. The other materials along the building up are a series of cementitious panels boards. That will either be flatboards or battening boards. So what we try with a couple of different colors. So what we've tried to do in here is develop a design where we've mixed some materials. We've mixed some colors. There are a lot of ins and outs in the building for for interest to it. And then we've capped it with a pitch roof. The corners of the building would have a cap metal standing seam roof. The larger extents would have an asphalt shingled roof, you know, let me back it up here. That can, as you can see here in the side elevation. You know, break it up with different materials, colors, textures. And you can see, here's the the garage entrance. That's right where I'm pointing to. The building height meets within your requirements of being a maximum of sixty five feet. And that is to the absolute peak of the roof. We do not see anything going above that and that is measured to the that sixty five feet is to the average grade. Going around the building. And then you, as I zoom in here on the front entrance of the building. You see that we took, you know, at the amenities area and to the main lobby. We've taken a little bit greater care to develop it with a little bit more detail. A little bit more interest, some different types of windows. And that and that playing with different materials. And the ins and outs to add some interest to the building. Let me see. Trying to think I. On to pick up some of the comments that were. Asked before, I think I talked about the gate. I talked about in the engineer's report about the post office mailboxes. And did the did the postmaster agree? I've talked about. The dens. I think that there was a question regarding cameras. I think that it is, we do not show cameras at this point, but I know it is the owner's intention. To put cameras around the property. And as far as the the two entry signs. You know, there is a desire to light those with uplights. And that will be dawn to dusk for that lighting. In regard to the construction timeframe of the building. It's been my experience that buildings like this take approximately eighteen months. From when ground is broken after a construction permit has been issued.
Mister, Mister Delaney, one question was asked about bicycle racks downstairs underneath in the inside the building.
Yeah, I I I thought I touched on that, but the what I had said is that this storage room right over here. Was a very good sized storage room, as you can see, it's ten, twenty, thirty, forty. Almost forty feet long by twenty five feet wide. That's what the where we would have the bicycle racks available for the residents. And and then they could immediately go into the elevator and up and out. And then the bicycle racks on the outside, we're reviewing that those are mostly for visitors that are coming.
Is that, that is, it concludes your testimony, Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Michael. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we leave it to the members of the board.
Mister Michaels, will you testify that the colors and materials that you show in your rendering design will be the colors and materials used in the final product?
I think they can be very, the intent is to do this color scheme. You know, I think the actual, the actual sample hasn't been picked at this time. But this is the the color scheme that we're intending to use.
Okay, so you will present samples as a condition to our. Planner. As part of the finished product.
I think that we would be happy to do that once, once it's developed and we're ready to do that.
Great, would you also agree to place a white or light or reflective roof to decrease the heat island effect?
You know, that's really not, I I I would argue that that's not appropriate for this building. And the reason I'm going to say to say that to you, as you can see, the majority of our roofs are sloped and shingled roofs. You know, and I'm not sure that 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 would be appropriate. What I would say is the one area that we really have essentially a flat roof. Is this is this interior courtyard in here. Which is is likely to be pavers. Okay, or it's going to be some landscape areas. So I I would be happy to go and look at lighter covered pavers in that area. And I think that the the landscaping that gets put in there. Would would also help to decrease the the heat island effect. I think the other limited areas that we have flat roofs, I think there's going to be a little flat roof over here. In the back of the amenities portion and then maybe in a couple of corners. We would have no objection to doing a white roof in those portions.
Okay, and you will provide some type of. Architectural design for the cameras and places that you put them around the project?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Bike, so that you'll put on the final plan that there will be a bike rack in the storage area in the garage?
Yes.
Okay, good. And you'll describe the uplighting not to interfere with anything on the roadway for the sign that's on Pleasant Valley Way especially. And all the information will be on the final site plan.
That that would not be a problem.
Okay, good. Okay, and. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Michael about his testimony?
Thank you, Chairman. Mister Michael, I do have a question. Your building design looks so similar to Brighton Gardens toward the front of your building. Is, was that intentional?
I I think we, we didn't specific specifically copy it. But we were aware contextually what's, you know, what was in the area. So it it it's it's not intended to mimic it.
Okay, no comment.
Thank you, Council President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions at this time, but thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Michaels, I have one more question. And I don't know if it's possible, but in the parking lot, is it possible to put islands with trees anywhere in the parking lot? Not, you don't have to put a lot, but just a couple?
I would, I would defer that to the engineer, back have him speak to it. To make sure that it doesn't obstruct with any of the drainage. So I I'd like to defer that back to him.
Okay, so when we're done with you, I'll go back to the engineer, thank you, Mister Alper.
Sure, um, maybe a little bit outside of planning, but I think it might be helpful to know. Given the mix of affordable and market rate units and the number of one, two, three bedrooms. Do you have a sense of how many schoolchildren we might expect coming out of this?
You know, we didn't do a study for this, but I've looked at on other projects similar. And I've reviewed reports from the Rutgers Planning Department regarding schoolchildren in these type of projects. And it it tends to be very minimal. You know, so my my sense is that it it might skew a little bit with the. With the three bedrooms and the affordable. But 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 generally what we found in these type of projects. You know, in in this area, that this it's very minimal schoolchildren impact.
Okay, I I wouldn't want to pin you to a number, but if you had to guess, is there within a dozen or so, do you think you could pick a number?
I would say less than a dozen, but you know, it's it the numbers that I've seen in the past are. And I haven't done the analysis for this and the analysis with the affordable mix on it. But the numbers that I've seen in the past out of that Rutgers study was astronomically low. It it was surprising.
Yeah, I I've seen that I've done some numbers myself and I think a lot depends on what the income rate expectation is for the. For the market rate unit owners, although I think their latest records is from two thousand eighteen at this point, so I think their income levels may need some updating anyway. Um, I think that's all I have for you, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Alper.
No questions at this time, Mister Chairman, thank you.
Moraldo, thank you, Mister Greeno.
Yeah, Mister Michaels, I'm talking about the building itself, let's talk fire protection, fire suppression, start with the basement. Where the parking area is, it's like.
The entire, the the entire building will be fire suppressed to what they call NFPA thirteen. And these type of buildings, you can do it two ways, there's an NFPA thirteen, there's a thirteen R. Thirteen R saves lives. NFPA thirteen saves buildings and lives, it's a much more intense fire suppression system. This building would be fully suppressed to that higher level, the NFPA thirteen system. Including the garage, the garage I would expect to have a dry sprinkler system. And what I mean by that is that the the sprinkler system is is charged with compressed air. That's holding, that's holding the sprinkler heads from going off, the way way sprinklers work. There's a sprinkler head and that they have what I call a fusible link in them. That when the, when you reach a certain temperature, that fusible link melts and the sprinkler head goes off. Normally in the in a building, you in a wet system, there's water behind it and immediately sprays. What happens in a dry system, there's compressed air behind it. And as soon as it, that air is released, that releases the full flow of water. And that's, that's how all these garages are designed.
Well, sir, I want to first of all commend you because that's probably the best explanation I've ever received from anybody during these applications. And just for the record, I'm the former fire chief, so I appreciate your knowledge of this, so thank you very much.
Was I accurate?
You're pretty darn close, thank you very much, you get an A. Let's talk about, let's talk about the alarm systems then.
Yes.
So well, it's going to be NFPA also, NFPA, smoke, garbage and so on and so forth, so full stations, all that stuff.
Fully compliant, yes.
Okay, and then regarding the stand pipes, is there going to be a stand pipes in there with staircase, just things of that nature?
Yes.
Okay, and they're going to have, they're going to have the accessible, you know, supplies on the outside of the of the property or the attached to the building or away from the building?
They they, I think we would, we would do it generally, would we do it sort of close to the entrance of the building with the Siamese. You know, and I guess we would ultimately work with your fire department on what kind of of attachment they want or the.
Mister Chairman, I would think for the record, because we have many places that do that kind of. Siamese connections, they swear they're not going to put plants and everything else in front of the Siamese, but then they become aesthetically unpleasing after a while, somebody flops a. A bush in front of them, can we just make sure that that in perpetuity, they don't get blocked, please?
Yes.
That would be, that would be, it would be great. Okay, she mentioned a flat roof, how do we get up there?
Um, they're. They're really going to be very, very limited flat roofs, so I would get, I would have some kind of access from the stair up there through. Probably through the attic roof to get to it. That entirely hasn't been designed at this point because it's on the inside and it's going to wait till the mechanicals are done. You know, I, my my sense is that I'd be minimizing the amount of flat roofs.
Okay, and you did say staircase, correct, but not a, not a ladder?
It's not the intention to do a ladder.
Right, that did, I'm big on those, so let's just make sure that that doesn't happen. The pitch, the pitch roofs, there's no mechanics up top, you're not going, we're not going to need a reason to get, have access to the pitch roofs other than. Aerial ladders and things of that nature.
Not, not. Not that I'm intending it this time, no.
Oh, I asked a question earlier, getting into the the parking garage, bollards, protections, things of that nature, how do you, how are you going to protect the entranceways from people crashing into?
You know, quite frankly, I think I'm zooming into it, I think it's, you know, it's. Wide enough, I mean that, you know, that we've oversized the opening to be beyond what that that driveway entrance is. You know, so that there's, you know, the the wall is another three feet to the side of that. So I don't, you know, with the curb and it being set back, I don't really see that being as a problem.
Okay, elevators, big enough, large enough, emergency medical?
Yep, they all conform to be able to, you know, they'll be all be minimum thirty five hundred pound cabs. There might be one or two that are a little bit bigger and those are scratcher compliant.
Mister Chairman, I think I've asked a lot of that so far, so thank you very much, Mister Michaels, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Moraldo, Mister Jensen. Mister Jensen. Okay, we'll we'll go to Mister Cardozo and see if Mister Jensen comes back, Mister Cardozo.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chairman, thank you, Mister Michaels, for your presentation, I have no questions at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Jensen. Okay, Mister Greigle.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman, this is the one question to clarify. Comment on the signage lighting. I believe you said from dawn to dusk, I assume that you meant dusk to dawn?
Yeah, sorry about that.
I figured it was much.
Carry it away. I was thinking three things ahead of time.
I mean, today, that may have come in handy today with the conditions, not generally. The other thing is more, I guess, a comment or clarification for the board with regard to the parking lot. Trees, the question that came up from the public as well as the chairman. The requirement again is one for every ten spaces, we could talk to engineer about this as well, but the perimeter, they are permitted to be provided within. The lot or on the perimeter, that's how the ordinance is written. There is supposed to be an unbroken, it's supposed to have one tree with every twenty spaces to not have a continuous line of spaces, so it might be helpful to do that. But again, that's generally intended for larger parking lots with multiple aisles, this is a single spot, single loaded only. So I thought the intent, when we viewed the cycle of your advisory board, I I thought the intention of the ordinance was met. All that said, the board still has the ability to ask the engineer about that and see if you'd like to, you know, request additional landscaping, certainly.
To expand on that, you know, I, my my feeling is the site was being designed that that the landscaping was very nice on it and it broke it up. And that, you know, that putting little islands in to break up that parking. Really become problematic with snow removal and then how water flows and so on. And that's sort of why I I deferred to the engineer, but I think the fact that this parking lot. Is going around the perimeter, it's only single loaded, it's not like it's a sixty four foot wide or sixty two foot wide. It's not like it's a sixty-four foot wide or sixty-two foot wide parking lot. Uh, I think it's broken up, it's small enough runs. Uh, I thought it was very elegant as it is.
That was, you know, my, my thought generally, but yeah, so, but again, well, I'll let the board, you know, ask if they're like, certainly. Thank you. That, that was all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greigle. Mr. Hess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have uh just two quick items. The first, Mr. Michaels, you had spoken about the applicant would like um. The gates at the entrance. Um, I'll note that the original site plan drawing submitted showed gates and then they were removed. So if, if you want gates, they need to be shown on the plan and the board needs to have the opportunity to review that. Um, second is uh, since you said that most of the roofs are gonna be pitched, where are you gonna have your um air conditioning units located?
Um, what I, as I took, for the units themselves. Uh, most of the units have balconies. And like I said, there's a little mechanical room in the corner uh that it goes and vents out the side and a little bump off that.
What about for the common spaces?
For the, for the common spaces, uh, that's where I spoke about that there's. Uh, that there, there probably is going to be a little flat roof on the back of the balcony over here. Uh, that'd be kind here, uh, and then I'm expecting, you know, one or two little areas of flat roofs on the back and the inside of the courtyard spot. Um, where it's just going to be condensers and so on, uh, because the comment, those common spaces are gonna really be limited to uh just the hallways. Uh, and they just really need some smaller condensers.
Okay, so nothing's going to be uh ground mounted? Uh, cause if they are, then they, they would obviously need to be shown on the site plan.
Yeah, no, nothing's anticipated to be ground mounted.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, I have one more question, Mr. Michaels. Is there any plan for an emergency standby generator?
Uh, the engineer shows it on the uh, on the site plan uh as a placeholder, I, I believe. Uh, you know, uh, and I think that as we go into the uh, the construction detailing of this in accordance with the new code. Uh, it'll be determined if it's required by the code or not, if it's going to be installed or not. Okay, we do show it and it's located, um, I believe in the site plan, it was located right over here.
Yeah, again, I'm gonna ask the board to consider this based on the location of this project, that it's off of the main roadway. And it is not uh available to street lighting. That uh, if there is an emergency, this may be a, a very viable option for the protection of the people in the building. But I'll leave that to the board to discuss. Uh, do any members of the public?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, before you go on, I, I actually have three follow-up questions.
And Mr. Moraldo.
Um, first of all, well, Mr. Hess brought up about the gates, um, you know, my, my one thing I wanna put on record if those gates, how are we gonna get emergency access into those gates? And, and how would you handle that if we ever, if we do approve them? That's something that needs to be considered because uh. If those gates are closed, we gotta get in, whether it be police, fire, EMS, whatever, somebody has to get in there. So we need to make sure that that is considered and I don't know if you can, uh, Mr. Michaels can answer that at this time or not?
I think, I, I don't have an answer for that. This time I'm sure that we can work that out with the uh, with the fire department, fire subcode official. Uh, having it uh, either they have in fobs or we can have a, a Knox box right at the, at each of those gate that would allow access to it.
Okay, um, the second question I'm looking at is I, I've noticed that, and we can mention is the pool. Where is, where is chemicals gonna be stored? Chemicals, the pumps, things of that nature?
I think right underneath the pool itself. Uh, you know, if you go into the garage, we have the pool here, uh, and we have a, a room right below it. You know, um, the, the floor-to-floor height of this garage level. Uh, let me see, is, is essentially thirteen feet, so the pool obviously isn't going to be that, that big and it's gonna be a lower portion of it. Uh, so I think that, let me go back to the ground, that within this enclosure. Uh, you know, which is a large area, uh, that's where we'd store the chemicals, uh, the pumps, all that type of stuff underneath the pool. Where it would have the pool structure above.
Okay, and um, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think for condition, uh, one of the conditions we should add is that because it's gonna be a pool area and we know that there's a gym there. We require this on a previous application, we should talk about defibrillators. Uh, being purchased by the owners and placed appropriately in, in those particular areas and any other areas that may be deemed uh something that needs to have. Um, uh, defibrillator in, on site.
Okay, the AED.
Yep.
Agreed.
All right, um, I'm sorry for the interruption, but those are my follow-up questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Michael? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have several. Uh, Mr. Michaels, can I ask you to stop your screen share, please?
Sure.
Uh, Jennifer Sharrett, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Jennifer Sharrett from um, eleven, eleven Howell Drive. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so I had two questions. The first, um, for, for the um. Is the only access to the building gonna be through those sliding doors? I ask, cause there is a synagogue that's very close to. The apartment building that might be attractive to people who want, you know, who would be observant. And are you considering making accommodations so that someone who was Sabbath observant would have a way to get in and out of that building?
Um, uh, yeah, actually, we, we have had that discussions with the, with the owner and, and the idea is, yes, we would make accommodations. Okay, uh, you know, and so there's, there's uh three, I guess, main entry points. There's the entry point. Uh, at the front entrance, uh, there are also doors down on either side. Uh, that get you into the, the building there as well. Uh, we've had discussions with the owner about the elevator, uh, and having one of the elevators uh on the Sabbath being able to run. Uh, so, uh, yes, that is on uh Mr. Begano's radar and his intention.
Great, um, my second question was, um, as a, I live on Howell Drive, which is off Cunningham. It is very difficult to turn, make a left turn. In the morning and I am concerned as a resident, um, what will, and this may not be for you, maybe for someone else and, and the plan board can direct me to who. Um, if there's been traffic studies and how will impact, you know, potentially, you know, three hundred new cars. Uh, coming in, you know, from that direction where it's already difficult to make the left onto Pleasant Valley Way.
That's really gonna be an issue for the um county.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Sasha Kademi, please state your name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting. Sasha Kademi, can you hear us? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Zassa Kademi for Dawes Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so I would like to ask a couple of questions. Um, were there any more updated designs considered for this project, sir?
Uh, the owner and I went through um several uh designs, looked at it, and this is uh. Uh, and the owner was very involved in developing this design. Uh, and this is one that he likes and uh feels is very appropriate.
Okay, great, so, um, but did, did you take any um sustainability measures were taken in this design, sir?
Yeah, there are a lot of sustainability measures that are taking into the, in the design. Uh, certainly there's going to be a, a lot of um. Building products that are recyclables in there. Uh, there's uh, you know, it's a very energy compliant building. Uh, it's gonna have the modern elevators that are very efficient and they uh, they regenerate with, when the elevator goes up and down and in. In offsetting the uh energy cost to use that. Uh, there is the um Energy Star appliances that are in the building. Uh, there's uh features of materials that uh, that give off, uh, you know. Uh, uh, don't uh outgas, uh, you know, a lot of the, the things that are, the principles that in the green building design. Are really incorporated into this building.
So how much further would you have to go to get lead certification in your design?
We have not done that analysis.
I, I would be really curious as to the answer, cause it sounds like you did a lot of work already. Did you say you're gonna have electric stove, sir?
Um, I don't think we've picked the stove center. I, I think I said we've been at Energy uh, Energy Star appliances. I don't think we've picked the particular appliances yet.
Oh, because as you know, natural gas is very polluting, uh, even though I love cooking on it. My last question, sir, um, uh, have you considered solar panels either on the roof or on the parking lot, which would actually mitigate your need for snow removal?
Um, we, we've um, uh, we've talked about solar panels on the roof. I, I think it's on the owner's agenda. To go and look at that a little bit more closely. Uh, as we do the construction documents on the building. Um, but that is one of the items that, that as we developed the, the construction drawings for the building that we were going to review more closely.
Great, um, will you be bringing up the idea of parking your solar panels in the parking lots for the owner, sir?
I, I, um, I think you just did.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any question for Mr. Michaels on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Uh, Joyce Rootin, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening again. Um, Joyce Rootin, Woodland Avenue. Um, have a couple of questions for you. First, I wanted to follow up on a prior uh member of the public's question. Um, on the issue of a traffic study or lack of traffic study, you said that's an issue for the county. Will the county be testifying?
I, I think the attorney said that. Um, I, I think the traffic is out of my area of expertise. You know.
I thought that you, you answered that, that that's an issue.
Ms. Rootin, I answered it and I said, if the traffic, if, if there is a need for a traffic study that might very well have to be addressed by the county. Because this board, it, it's a, it totally within the confines of the uh ordinance, the traffic study isn't necessary. From our, from this, this planning perspective.
Okay, I call that to the attention of this board. This is a very busy road. Um, a traffic study should be necessary on this. I would like uh to request that you pull up the plan and show us exactly. Where um the affordable units are going to be located.
Sure. Um, go back to sharing my screen. Uh, I'm going to go to a, a. Uh, typical floor, okay? Uh, there's a one bedroom right here. There are two, two bedrooms right there. There's a three bedroom right there. Another three bedroom right there. Two more two bedrooms right here and those stack four high.
Okay, so of those units, how many of those units have balconies?
Um, one, two, three, uh, all of them.
Okay, so all of the affordable units will have balconies?
In the design we have right now, yes.
Okay, um, can you discuss the amenities that will be in the um market rate apartments? What amenities do you plan to have and are they exactly the same amenities in the affordable units?
Yeah, I think that generally the, 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 you know, the full amenity package within the units. Hasn't been designed, but the general features of uh, of the washer, dryers, of the uh kitchen appliances and so on. Uh, at, at this point, we haven't picked finishes on it. Uh, so we have not to, that's sort of an interior design level discussion and we have not.
I just wanna know if the, if the amenities will be identical from the market rate to the affordable units. And will, will the finishes in the, in the, in the units be identical?
Uh, I, I don't think that those have been designed yet, so I, I can't say that, you know, it's uh. They're a little different unit and.
How are they different from the other units?
We, we have not designed the interior finishes of the units yet. So, you know, so we, we've designed the typical unit plans and I can show you the different. A typical unit plan, like for instance, here's a, here's a, here's a typical. Think a typical three-bedroom apartment, a, a, affordable unit.
Okay.
It's got a kitchen, it's got a, you know, um, a sink, a range, a refrigerator, it's got a washer dryer. Uh, it's got the balcony on it. Uh, it's got uh one bathroom with a shower. It's got one bathroom with a tub.
And how does that differ from a market rate apartment?
It really doesn't. It's, it's, the, the market rates are a little bit larger. You know, it's same thing, same type of appliances in the kitchen, uh, same washer dryer, uh, same, you know, two bathrooms. You know, they're very similar, uh, very similar in character.
Okay, so can, can you, can you make a guarantee to this board? That you will provide identical amenities inside? In other words, that the refrigerators will be the same?
No. No, uh, because, because we haven't made those selections yet and that, um, that would be a commitment by the owner.
Okay, well, I'd just like to state that other towns like Livingston. Don't allow inequity or the appearance of inequity because of the look. It's not a good look and it's not a good look for West Orange as well. So I would urge you to make sure that all of the amenities are the same. So that one who is living in an affordable unit does not have to feel discriminated against or lesser than when people come over. And see that the appliances, et cetera, are different. I also would urge you to uh consider electric stoves, as was previously mentioned. Um, you testified that, that the um addition of schoolchildren would be very minimal. Are you familiar with all of our apartments in West Orange where we have a lot of schoolchildren coming from apartments?
What I testified to is that I've, uh, I haven't done a detailed study on this. Uh, the planner asked the question to me and I said that, you know, the, the context and where I answered that question. Was some reports that I've seen at a Rutgers University uh regarding studies in the past. Uh, and that those studies have typically had shown uh that, that, that is minimal. Uh, I've not the detailed study regarding schoolchildren for this specific building. And that's, that's really, that's really more of a planner's uh, planner's thing.
But you testified to the fact that you saw very few schoolchildren coming into this building. I wanna follow up on that.
I think, I think what he testified to was that he was not making any clarification state, clarity statements, not making, he was just basing it. Upon what he read at regarding Rutgers planning seminar or statements.
Right, and that, that he said that that tends to be very minimal. That was a quote. So I just want to put that on the record that that does not necessarily apply to how apartments are used in West Orange. Which are often very filled with schoolchildren. Um, you also mentioned that you thought that having trees in the po, in the parking lot. Would be problematic with, with snow removal. Why would that be problematic?
It, it just, it, it's, it's just not as clean an operation for the snow removal.
You mean it's not as, as easy to remove it?
Yes. Absolutely.
So it might take more, it might take more time and thus more money?
Easy and curbs tend to get damaged and so on. Uh, you know, but once again, I deferred that discussion to the engineer.
Okay, because the current standard right now is to have trees, one tree for every ten parking spots, so I'm just. You know, concerned when I hear you say that it's problematic. That just means that it's more difficult to remove it, but it doesn't mean it's impossible. And trees also absorb a lot of water, so adding trees in a parking lot seems to be a very good idea. Um, I'd also like to ask, your building is, is, is approximately two feet higher than the building in front of it, which is the Brighton Gardens?
Okay.
Uh, how will that look from, if you are a resident at Brighton Gardens? Will they now be looking straight at your building?
They, uh, the building is quite a distance away, but I, I quite frankly, I didn't do um. A, a slope study anytime recently on that. Uh, and when I did it a long time ago in the past, uh, we felt there was no problem.
Uh, speaking of slopes, what exactly is the percentage of slopes that you're dealing with?
Percentage of slopes on what?
On the property.
That's a question for the engineer.
Okay, he did not, uh, then, then when he, if he comes back, I'd like to, to ask him uh questions. So getting back to the trees.
Ms. Rootin, your time is up. I wanna thank you very much for your questions, but your time is up. Thank you. Uh, does anybody else have any? Does anybody else have any questions for the architect?
We have, we have two more. Mr. Malanga, welcome to me and please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Vega and Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road. Good evening, Mr. Michael.
Good evening.
I just heard you testify, sir, with regard to the number of bathrooms in the three bedroom units. Is that a, a commitment by the applicant to have two bathrooms for all three bedroom affordable housing units?
That's what we're showing on our plan.
Okay, so that's, that will be a condition of approval to have that type of configuration. Am I right about that?
Um, I, what we're showing is what the intent was.
Okay, so is, I guess, is, is that a yes or a no to my question, sir?
I believe that is a yes.
Okay. With respect to the parking lot, what type of material will be used to pave the parking lot? Will it be asphalt? Will it be concrete?
Once again, that's a question for the civil engineer.
All right, so you don't know if cool pavement technology will be used for the parking lot?
I, I would defer that to him. He detailed it and showed it. I, I wouldn't want to answer inattic, in- inaccurately.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions, Mr. Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Michaels?
Jack Dean, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you. Jack Dean, Bromley Drive. And Mr. Chairman, just two questions. They're basically extending, I think, previous comments. Could a rendering be prepared to show the view of this building as would be experienced from Pleasant Valley Way? There is this sort of sloping down to the valley of the river and then coming back up and the Brighton Gardens building in front of it, but it's not really clear what someone would see from Pleasant Valley Way. So I think that might be helpful. My second area is regarding the affordable units. It's terrific. These are being added as, as a necessary feature of the building. One is, I guess, I would assume that also that all of the tenants of the affordable units would have equal access to all of the common amenities of the building. Pool and the music rooms and so forth. So I, I hope that would be the case. And then the second would be, I did notice a difference on the placement of the mechanical units and the affordable units versus the market rate units. It appeared to at least my eye that the market rate units had the mechanicals sort of exterior to the building off of their balconies. And it appeared that the affordable units have the mechanicals inside the units. Could that be explained or would that be?
Yeah, it's sort of dependent on the, on the unit design and where the unit falls within the building. There were also market rate building units that have them exterior to it. You know, so they're, they're both going to operate the same way. They're going to both be the same efficiency. You know, so it, it, I really didn't feel that there's there's a benefit one way or the other, other than, than, you know, not needing to require rooftop. The ones that don't have them on the balconies, I need to go and find a little piece of flat roof somewhere to put a condenser for. So actually, those are a little bit more hard to work with. So, but where the buildings were, where the units were located, we, this is what we felt was appropriate.
But it shouldn't have a negative effect with respect to noise and vibration inside the affordable units?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Do any of the. Chairman, I am seeing no other hands raised at this moment.
Okay, so one question that I have for the architect, would you testify about types of appliances with relation to Ms. Rooton, I believe? Can you say, and I'll leave this to the, the architect and the applicant. Can you say that the, all the appliances will be materially similar to each other for the market rate and the affordable housing units? And as far as cool pavement technology, I agree with Mr. Malanga that we, the board should take that up as a condition because that will decrease eight to ninety-five percent of the heat island effect of the parking lot and it's going to be a big macabre around that project. And we'll talk about that. Okay, other than that, I have no other questions.
I think on the appliances, I can say yes, you know, you know, they will be materially similar.
Okay. Thank you. And as far as for the fire department, I would recommend a knock box and a key fob, so they have both, both opportunities.
We'll certainly work with the fire department to meet their needs.
Perfect, thank you. And that's all the questions I have, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate your testimony.
Mr. Chairman, that's all we have this evening. That's, that's our, that's our application.
Okay, do you want to make a sum up or?
I'll submit. This is, this is, it's late hour. I, no reason to. It's a pretty straightforward application. It is permitted. There are no variances needed. It's basically nothing more than a site plan application. And I believe that we've met all the requisite requirements.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Mr. Chairman, there are no hands raised.
I don't stand.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, one came in late.
Come right on, come right down.
Zoska Demi, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Zos Academy, Four Dawes Avenue. Yes, my concerns are this. My concerns are, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my concerns are several. Um, there, the sewer study wasn't done and our sewers are already at capacity. That's well known. Traffic study wasn't done and it's going to be very tough spot since there's only one entrance and exit and probably no left turn. And the most thing I'm concerned about is we're with two and three bedroom units, that there would be very few children. I don't know. I'm concerned that there's, our schools are also at capacity and no one seems to want to address the fact that what are we going to do to accommodate all these new children? So these are my concerns and in short, and in summation, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have any comments?
Kevin Malanga, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you again, Mr. Vega. Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I would like to support the chairman's comment with regard to the electrified vehicle charging stations. I feel it's important that all the charging stations be installed upon completion of the project. They should not be staged. Eight percent of new car sales in New Jersey are electric vehicles. And that can only grow year by year. As the chairman properly pointed out, there could be, you know, an explosion of sales of electric vehicles and this project will be caught short. So I urge the board to consider requiring all electrified charging stations be constructed upon completion of the building itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. Do any other members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Joyce Rootin, please state your name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting.
Joyce Rootin, Woodland Avenue. In looking over this application, I want to echo what a previous caller said. There are lots of things that have not been considered. Number one, we haven't gotten an answer to how long this building will take to get up. What is the building time? This, this building is positioned directly behind a senior housing that has, has sick dementia elderly people. I'd like to know how long the construction will be and you know, what the impact on, on, in particular, the residents at Brighton Gardens will be. There has been no traffic study. It's been pushed off onto the county will assess that. There needs to be a, a study on a full and complete traffic study. There has been no study on the impact on schools. There's just been an updated school review that does not include this building and does not include what could be you know, two hundred children coming from this building minimally. That needs to be done before this is approved. In addition, the sustainability checklist that this applicant has provided is, is weak. I, I was not really pleased to hear the response that the, the appliances will be materially the same. I'd like to know that they are exactly the same, not materially, not a lesser Babka, as they would say in Seinfeld, but the exact same. There are lots of brands that have low ends and high ends and I'd like to, to have a guarantee from this owner that they will be exactly the same. And of course, I, I appreciate that they will all be Energy Star. This is designed by a LEED certified planner. Why are we not getting LEED certification for a building? That is part of our sustainability checklist, which never seems to be applied. I'd also like to echo that there really should be solar paneling on this project. It says in the start, in the, in the sustainability checklist that the owner will investigate the feasibility. The feasibility is there and it should be done. There should be trees planted in the, in the parking lot and there should be other, other plantings in and around the, the pool to reduce a heat island effect just on the interior courtyard. So all in all, to sum up, we have no building time. We don't have a traffic study and we don't have an impact on how this will affect our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any comments on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Roz Moskowitz-Balinski, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, hi, Roz Moskowitz-Balinski, eleven Whitewood Drive. As a frequent flyer on Pleasant Valley Way, I would also like to see a traffic report with the ingress, with particularly, you know, as Mr. Lee, our resident, said. You know, he's on Mayfair, taking a left-hand turn onto the, onto four, four lanes. It's an arterial highway, Pleasant Valley Way. And those cars get a green light on Woodland Avenue and they go. So I'm concerned about that traffic pattern. And I would like to see a traffic report as well. Also, it was mentioned that one would have to cross, of course, Pleasant Valley Way to get to a sidewalk to walk to Verona Park or to walk north on, I mean, south on Pleasant Valley Ways. This, this might indicate a pedestrian crossing here in the future. I'm concerned about people crossing to get to a sidewalk to go to a park. Unfortunately, we don't have a sidewalk on that side of Pleasant Valley Way. This is something that we should all be considering in the future, but I am concerned about people crossing four lanes of traffic to get to a sidewalk. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Mr. Chairman, there are no hands raised at this moment.
Okay, at this time, I want to close public comment. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to go through the board and you can make your comments. I'll make mine first. I, as I find my comments, make them. I would like the applicant to consider solar panels on some or all of the project and report back to the director of planning. I would like to see the parking lot pavement, cool pavement technology that's going to reflect eighty to ninety percent of solar heat. It's also going to probably decrease the need to redo the parking lot more often and decrease the heat that's generated around the plantings. I would like all the plantings to be native trees and bushes. I would like, again, I, I, I don't know that it's, and I realize that other towns may do other things, but I would put the terminology again, and this is up for the board, that the appliances be materially similar as opposed to exactly similar. So because of supply chain issues, it may not be feasible to do the entire building with exactly the same appliances. Over time, as we see in these stores around us, sometimes you can get exactly the same thing and sometimes you can't get exactly the same thing. So we have to be reasonable, but I think the term materially similar is going to be the best that we can ask for. What else? A- as far as the traffic study, I, I understand everybody's concerns, but the, the access to the roadway is really the county and not the township planning board. So I, I leave that to the county. What else? The key fob, again, the architect said that it'll work with the fire department for a number of issues, including the key fob and the knock box. We'll have to get exactly the specifications of the uplighting for the signs from dusk until dawn. The bicycle racks will be placed on the final architectural plan to the storage center. All of the storage materials for the pool will be placed on the architectural plans. With, the applicant will try and decrease the heat island effect around the pool by adding new plantings and working with the pavers. And I think I've had my piece. So let's go through Mayor McCartney.
Well, thank you again, Chairman. I think that question came up about the sewer system and I wanted to ask Mr. Hess if, if you can address that concern that was raised?
Yes, we've asked them to evaluate the existing capacity of the pump station, which they've agreed to do. And if, if upgrades are required, they're going to have to address it at that time.
Okay, thank you. And Chairman, I agree with all the points that you just made to add to that, this resolution. But I had a question about this timeline with the county. How, really, how does the traffic work if we, you know, if we do move forward with this application and then do we have to wait for the county to weigh in first?
I think they have to go to the county after we approve it and present the application and then the county will decide if there was a need for a traffic study. At which time, any member of the public can go back to the public hearing the county has and voice the same concerns.
Because that is a very wide stretch, Pleasant Valley Way. I would be just as concerned for people who are not going to walk down to Woodland Avenue just across the street at that light. So hopefully there's some type of crosswalk or beacon, something that as what we did on Main Street, maybe can happen on Pleasant Valley Way.
So one of the things, Mayor, and I'll defer to our board attorney. If the board so feels, we can send a letter from the planning board to the county saying that we rec, we highly recommend, based on the number of units, a, a traffic study be conducted by the, the county. We will send that independently of the application. Again, if the board, if the board feels that is reasonable and our board attorney feels that it is appropriate.
And adding the consideration for a crosswalk at that point?
Yes.
However, many feet away from the traffic light, whatever their regulations are?
Yes. I think that will, that will voice the concerns of the public that we've heard tonight and ask the county whose roadway it is to consider all those things.
That's absolutely correct. You can do that. Now, you can also do it in terms of, as a condition that the resolution be forwarded to the county planning board.
Along with the letter?
Along with the letter so that they can see, you know, the whole gist of what the board reviewed and the concerns which would be embodied in the resolution where members of the board brought, you know, questioned the fact that there's no sidewalks on that side of Pleasant Valley Way. And that's kind, that kind of thing will end up in the resolution in terms of facts that were developed from the, from the application.
Okay, we'll put that as a condition for the board to discuss.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a few comments in regard to some of the conditions that we've discussed, some of the recommendations from the public as well as from the board to consider as we deliberate on the approval of this application. So firstly, I just wanted to go back and, and reiterate my concerns regarding the appliances and the affordable units versus the market rate units. I would absolutely like to see the same. I would absolutely like to see the same appliances in both types of units. I do think it's extremely important, although we do have our affordability component, COA obligation. I think what is most important is that those who may need additional support to live. Do not feel that they are in an environment that is less than. What we do understand about the diversity in housing is that when there are no visible differences. It is uplifting, motivating to those who may need that additional support. And actually, at the end result, oftentimes encourages them to aspire to achieve more. Do more, be more, and have better success in achieving the American dream and equity and equality. So I would like to see that as the board considers consideration and that there be no. Discrepancy or or difference in the appliances that are in all of the units, I think they should absolutely be the same. Secondly, as it refers to trees in the parking lot. Again, just going back to the ordinance that we have on record, understanding that it is one row. As was indicated by our planning board attorney or planning board. Mr. Greigle, certainly, he gave explanation as to why this application. Meets the ordinance requirements, and I think that that is satisfactory. The other consideration and concern that I had was I would absolutely like to see. A requirement that we do send a recommendation to the county. For a crosswalk consideration, perhaps even some type of. Sidewalk consideration, however, because that is not something that the township. Actually controls, because this is a county road, I would not like to see that as a condition to this applicant. Because again, that is a requirement from a different body, governing body. So I would not like to see that impede the progress if approved for this applicant. I would like it to certainly be noted, something that we consider, but for it not to be a condition for them to proceed and move forward. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Council President, Yamalad, I'd like the record to show that Mr. Morgan has joined the meeting. At whatever time he joined the meeting.
Okay, no problem.
In case you didn't see him before, hello, Mr. Morgan. Uh, Mr. Alper.
Um, I'd agree wholeheartedly with Council President Williams on the crosswalk issue with the county. I also just want to point out, looking at Google Maps, that it looks like there is a crosswalk on that side of PVW. Starting just south of Brighton. So the county wouldn't need to do a lot to put to make a full connection there. To get down to where there is. I think the only other thing I have is I just want to clarify on schoolchildren numbers, you know, that I think it's it's important. I'm glad we're covering it, I think it's important that we discuss it, that we keep abreast of it. But I think we have to keep the discussion, you know, reality-based, right? There's. There's no. There's currently, I believe, fewer than five hundred kids in the schools, and I know this is a former school board president. Who are coming from apartments, the multipliers using the Rutgers, the Rutgers numbers tend to be fairly accurate. The least in my experience, they always were. Garden apartments tend to produce a good number of schoolchildren, affordable units tend to produce a good number of schoolchildren. But market rate units outside of garden apartments generally don't. You know, I I think my more conservative read of the Rutgers number might be thirty-six children as opposed to twelve children. But in a million years, it would not be two hundred, and I I don't think it's responsible. For us to, you know, for numbers like that get thrown out there and people get scared. Because I think thirty-six is a much more feasible possibility and something that we can think about. You know, as we look at impacts, but you know, I I I I. We should use something based in reality, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Alper, Mr. Guarino.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, as the pedestrian safety advisory board goes, in fact, it's very important. For residents to have the access to the roadways and everything else, so potentially, we should, you know, make it a point that. It's not an impediment to this approval of the application, but. The county should look into, you know, and we as board advocating for. Possibilities of a mid-brock crosswalk, forty addition of sidewalks in front. So people can get to Woodland Avenue, I mean, that's where the other controlled crosswalk is. Because putting a controlled crosswalk at the entrance to this development is too close to Woodland Avenue. And then you'd have an EPA situation where you have cars stopping and all and creating increased pollution in that area. But I, you know, I strongly support what Council President Williams said. And what Ken said too, but I think it's something we should, you know, advocate for to make it. You you get to do two things at once, you get a new development, but you also get pedestrian safety, which is something that we're very big on. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Most of my concerns were addressed by the panel. I want to thank the applicant for their time and for their thoroughness.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, Mrs. Meraldo.
Mr. Chairman, I believe all my conditions were already written down that I. Before, and the only thing I do want to point out though is that the knockbox. We don't necessarily have to make that a condition because it actually is ordinance. Section eighteen, so we, so it has to be put in no matter what, so we could just just a point of order, just so we. We didn't have that in there, all right, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Yes, Jensen, okay, Mr. Cardoza.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to piggyback on Mr. Alper's discussion of the schoolchildren. And I think it would be helpful to just have kind of, excuse me, point of clarification. And Ms. McGovern, perhaps you can answer this, what is within our kind of authority to request? As pertains to an evaluation of schoolchildren and, you know, what body would that go before the town? Board of Ed, I'm a little confused on that.
Well, it's an interesting thing. It's, I don't think it's a criteria to deny something if that's if that's what you're inquiring about, it's something that, again. I don't know, is your Board of Ed given notice and when there's a site plan review, I don't.
Mr. McGovern, I've been playing what attorney in Rockaway Township for thirty years. The issue of school is the fact that it is it is an approved. Site for what we're doing.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that. I understand that, my my question is, I don't know whether the Board of Ed in West Orange is even aware of this application. If they're formally given a copy. So that they can plan ahead, I'm not saying that this is going to change anything. But that perhaps the board would want a copy of the resolution. To be sent to the Board of Ed so that they could see down the line, they can make plans for perhaps additional schoolchildren coming into the system.
Makes sense, I asked the question not to add any conditions or not, because it's really not relevant to. The overall evaluation, but because it's such a point of contention for. Public, as it's been mentioned several times, it doesn't seem to be quite the right form, so I think. It would just help to clarify, what is the right form? Where would the public go to voice these concerns as pertains to this application?
Yeah, the 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 planning for more children, for schoolchildren goes to the Board of Ed, because that's who's in charge of that. So I would I would suggest that. If you're writing to the county planning board about, you know, the improvements or the concerns here. That we can also send a copy of the resolution, assuming it's approved. To the Board of Ed so that they know potentially there's more schoolchildren in this area. And they can keep an eye on it and plan accordingly.
Understood, thank you.
And Ms. McGovern, that that's excellent, and I will make that a recommendation to the council that we do this for all applications. That have any housing going forward in perpetuity, all of our application, all of our resolved applications are sent to the chairman of the school board. For their review, Mr. Alper.
I might recommend that maybe we should be sending, once the agenda, once an agenda comes out and we know there's a project that's going to involve. Schoolchildren, that it gets sent to the board so that they can make sure they have somebody at the meeting to observe, if possible.
Okay, Yamalat, you'll take care of that, please. We'll make that in perpetuity, Mayor McCartney.
Chairman, I'm not, this question is either for Diana McGovern or Paul Greigle. It feels like we had this conversation before about land use law and the number of children. Coming out of applications that we approve.
There, I'm sorry to interrupt, is it possible for you to increase your volume on your computer, it's very difficult to hear you?
Okay, sorry. The question was, is there a law or provision where the planning board cannot use? The number of children coming out of an application to determine an application?
Yes. We cannot use the children, we cannot use the number of children.
I mean, it's certainly a, you know, consideration that we do have to take into consideration. But I felt like that there was some type of statute that prohibited us.
That's what you, that's the master plan is for that you do every year, you look at the master plan, you look at where you're planning, what your housing. Components are and how that's going to impact our community.
Okay, good, thank you.
And you've already given permission for this site to be used for residential, so that's already taken care of.
Yes, okay. Mr. Greigle and Mr. Hess, do you have any other comments? Or conditions that you'd recommend, oh, we do have three waivers, we have to review and grant or not. Before we condition, before we vote on the conditions of the application, the first waiver was for lighting. Mr. Greigle or Mr. Hess, do you have any comments?
I have no objection to the waiver. Two-foot difference, in my opinion, is the minimalist.
I agree, so based on, based on Mr. Hess's agreement that the two-foot. And it was testified, that will be a backing that will prevent lighting from splashing to the neighbors. I recommend we approve that waiver, do any members of the board disagree? Seeing none, I will say that the board has agreed to that waiver. There was two other waivers, as I recall.
Environmental impact statements, one.
I'm sorry?
Environmental impact statement.
Could you say that again, it's.
Environmental impact statement.
Environmental impact statement, the DEP has taken care of that, as I recall.
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Greigle, Mr. Hess, do you agree?
Yes, to get, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was just gonna say I agree, and this is a previously disturbed site, so. I I don't think an environmental impact statement would be necessary.
Agreed, so based on the testimony and the understanding that is, it was a site that was demised. That it is rubble and it was. Treated as an environmentally unfriendly site, now it's friendly. I agree, we can, we should, unless any member of the board has a votes no. I would say the board votes yes, and we can waive that, and there was one.
A copy of the cleanup certification from the DEP or whatever agency was involved should be submitted to the board.
Yes, we had that as a condition earlier, thank you, Mr. Hess. And there was one other waiver that was requested.
I think it had to do with a tree removal.
It was for staging plans, since this.
staging plans, staging plans, so, and Ms. Rudin, we did have testimony from the architect. Contrary to what you may have heard, that it was going to take approximately eighteen months to do the project. So having said that and understanding that this project is going to be continuous. Unless I misunderstood something, that the staging really doesn't exist.
It's not applicable.
It's not applicable in this, in this case, Mr. Hess or Mr. Greigle, do you disagree?
Nope, not at all.
Okay, so then I recommend we waive that unless I hear a no vote from the board, members of the board. So it appears that everybody's in agreement on the three waivers, so the three waivers are approved.
Chairman.
Mayor McCartney.
Thank you, I want, I appreciate the consideration for Brighton Gardens, I have a relationship with that. Company there as far as an intergenerational program. But just last Friday, I did a hard hat tour, their interior is totally under construction. So as much as I appreciate the concern that some of the speakers had about the construction phases. It's going on internally there as we speak.
And I also believe that it gives the people there something to look at. That's going on in the neighborhood and it is an upgrade to the neighborhood that will benefit them in the long run also. So, to that end. Ms. McGovern, I know it's a long list, can you review, oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. The emergency standby generator, I'm going to recommend to the board that we make that a condition of the application. I would like to see the emergency standby generator based on this being way off of the roadway. If there is a blackout, total power outage, they're going to need some type of lighting system. And heat and or hot water to maintain themselves in that location, it'll be better than having them move out. Down the roadway up into the street.
Right, I I can go through the list of conditions as. They came up.
Okay.
They will abide by the May thirty-first to twenty twenty-three Hess report, will comply with those. Those items, the details for the bridge approved by the DEP, which are a pre-manufactured bridge. With the exception of that, because that has to be supplied after the, it gets. Drawn up and installed, and that the applicant will work with, work with the engineer on the pump house capacity. To ensure that it's adequate. If any trees that are as part of the landscape plan die, the applicant must replace them. The property owner will maintain the driveway up to Pleasant Valley Way. The DEP approval letter will be supplied to the building department. Should gates be installed to the parking garage? They will work with the fire department to make sure that safe access can be gained by all emergency vehicles. The signs will be lit from dusk to dawn with uplighting. Colors and materials as shown in the design will be presented in sample form to the planner and will. Work with the planner to achieve the look closest to the designs as presented. The interior flat area with pavers, they will look to use a lighter color paver to help. Environmentally and the flat roofs will also be done with the lighter color roof. Bike rack in the storage area is shown on the plans will be installed and noted on the plans.
In the, inside the building.
Inside the building, yeah. The uplighting on the sign near the roadway will not interfere with roadway traffic. All conditions will be placed on the plans. The Siamese connection. Fire Siamese connection will not be blocked with any plants. Defibrillators must be placed at the pool and gym area, or I guess it's AED. Devices must be placed at the pool and gym area on site. Okay, I'm going to come back to the appliances because you have difference in wording, and I think you have to work that out.
Council President, may I interrupt, so Council President, if there is a supply chain issue. And you're giving a a Mana seven-three-two-four, and you can't get it. What do you do? If you have something materially similar, which is another brand, that is the same size with the same Energy Star. That is one door, two doors, however it is set up. I'm trying to give the applicant leeway because this is not going to be rented all at once, I'm sure they're not going to put every appliance in. Everything all at once, and I understand what you're saying, but I I think we have to give them leeway. Because if they don't have something exactly the same, then they're in deviation of the application. Ms. McGovern, does that sound fair?
I understand both parts of it, I think this is a board decision that you're all going to have to weigh in on how you want the wording. I don't know, I don't know, I don't, I, it sounds fair to me, but it might not sound fair to some of the other board members, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Ms. McGovern, so my only concern is materially sound is acceptable. My concern is the distinction between the affordable units and the market rate units. I do not want there to be a permitted. I do not want there to be a permitted distinction in using a lesser than item for one of your affordable units. So I'm okay with, I'm okay with materially same, but just not differentiating between which units are which.
Agreed. I, 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 I will support that. I support that 100%. So if you, if you build, if you rent 10 units and buy appliances for 10 units, it has to be the same appliances purchased in that package, whether it's affordable or not. And it could be materially, it could be materially similar, but different brands that were purchased for the first 10 units. Because those brands are not available anymore. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I, I think I can, I'm going to work with the language on the condition. I think I, I understand it. It's, it's such that if you have, if you're able to buy 50 stoves by Maytag and 50 stoves by Whirlpool, they have to be equally used despite whether their market value or affordable housing value.
We're not making any differentiation in appliances for either unit.
Right. I, I will, I will get that language. I understand the concept, and I will make sure that that gets relayed into the condition. And then the last condition was that you must have an emergency generator.
And the, the parking lot, the parking lot, McCadham.
Okay, so, okay, now you said you were discussing that, so you would like, the way you phrased it was, you would like the applicant to consider solar panels and cool pavement. Are you making those conditions?
Yes, I am in the board. The cool pavement technology reflects solar heat from the parking lot.
Okay.
And I think long term, that's going to be very, very helpful.
Okay.
Especially if you're walking around that area and it's a, it's a hot summer day.
And then all native trees and bushes.
I, I also believe the condition, Mr. Chairman, was that the detention basins would be maintained by the owner.
Yes.
That's, that's pretty much by law, but I'll put that in as well.
It is, but you just don't want it to be so.
Right.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. Chairman, the other thing was, I, I asked for a staircase to the flat roof, not a skull hole.
Oh, I thought that was on the plans already. I will.
Okay. Mr. Maraldo, do you want a staircase to the flat roof that will allow a fire person with a stop pack?
And, and whether it be fire, mechanical, you know, appliance technician, anything, anybody can, needs access to the roof units.
Got it.
Roof top units.
Okay, um, what was the other thing? I was thinking there's something else. Oh, I forgot the other thing. Generator, ventilators, lighting company. Oh, and applicant is going to place cameras around the property.
Okay.
To be placed on the plan, the final plan, and all conditions, as we say, will also be on this, on the plan itself.
Yeah.
And the letter will be sent, all this will be sent to the county planning board, and we recommend to the county planning board that a traffic study be done for safety, health, and welfare reasons.
Right, so is that in a letter or you want that as a condition?
It's in a letter and a condition.
And the condition, okay.
So when we send everything to the county, they can read that. It's, it's not a condition of the application that will have a.
Just emphasizing that the county can.
Yes, they consider it.
Got it. Yeah.
And I agree, because I was the one who brought up the island and the parking lot. I agree with Council President and Mr. Hess that the parking lot is, i- i- in that fashion, it may not be amenable to the trees in the parking lot. It may be deleterious to the ability to clean and maintain the parking lot. So I agree with the trees placed in the areas that they are presently placed in. Having said that, does anybody else have any conditions or questions? Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, there is a member of the public who has their hand raised. I don't know if you want to hear them or not.
We've, unfortunately not. We've made all the conditions. We've heard all the testimony. We've done everything we can, and everybody had a fair opportunity. So the applicant also has a, a right, and we're going to exercise the applicant's right. So, having said that, um, I make a motion that we approve PB 23-04 Redwood LLC, 200 Pleasant Valley Way, Block 151, Lot 33, Zone IHO-2, with all the conditions noted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Cardoza seconds. Yamal, on the application.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen? Mr. Jensen?
I don't think he's still, oh, yeah, he is.
Still on, but, Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Absolutely, yes.
Um, just, Mr. Jensen?
Mr. Jensen, can you let us know that you're here?
He'd probably step away from the.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Nobody leave the board on our side. We have to decide, can everybody come June 21st, June 28th, and July 19th for special meetings? Is there anybody that cannot be here on Zoom?
Mr. Chairman, June 21st is my 37th wedding anniversary, and I'm going to be away. If you, if I want to remain married, I will not be here.
Okay.
Um, so, Chairman Bagow, for the 21st, I do have a quorum. They did say no was Mr. Guarino. Mrs. Maraldo, of course, and I don't know about Mr. Morgan, though.
Okay, so I'll be here on the 28th. Who, who will be available on the 28th?
I will, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Cardoza, Mr. Morgan, Mr. Alper, Council President, Mayor. Okay, so it looks like we're going to have a quorum. So Mr. Greigle, Mr. Hess, you'll just have to see if you have somebody in your firm, if you personally are not available.
Yes, unfortunately, all three of those nights I have previously scheduled meetings. The 21st, I have someone that can be there if that's what you go for that night.
Thank you.
I'm in the same position, but I'll have somebody come to the meeting. That's no problem.
And guys, for July 19th, who can be at the tentative special meeting July 19th? One, two, three, four, five. We've got a quorum. Okay, who beans? So, and, and just remember, the next regular planning board meeting is July 5th, the day after July 4th at 7:30 PM via Zoom. I want to thank everybody for your attention this evening. It was a, a good application. We heard a lot of good stuff from the public. We've addressed it the best way we can, and I want to thank you very much for your attention. Motion to adjourn. Second motion.
Hi.
Mr. Cardoza seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes are above the nose. Have a wonderful evening. Have a great July and safe July 4th. Thank you very much.
See you in two weeks.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.